Thank you. If councilors could take their seats, please. Councilor Leveque. Okay, do we have a quorum? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight? Okay. We— Chris? Chris?
Good evening. I would like to welcome you to the April 3rd, 2025, meeting of the Barnesville Town Council. We do have a quorum with Counselor Starr online. In accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20, I must inquire whether anyone is recording this meeting, and if so, to please make your presence known. Seeing no one. This— this meeting is being televised live via Xfinity, Channel 8, Channel 1070, and High Definition, Channel 1072. It may also be accessed via the Government Access Channel livestream feed on the town website. Okay. Madam Clerk, we have roll call, please.
Counselors— Bloom.
Here.
Burdick.
Present.
Clark.
Here.
Crowe.
Here.
Leveque. Lutke.
Here.
Mendez. Neary. Penn. Schnep. Starr. Tamish.
Here.
Turkelson.
Here.
We have quorum.
Thank you. Ms. Poyant, is there a way to see if Counselor Mendez and Counselor Penn will show up? They're not there, so—we did hear them, though. Oh, there's Counselor Mendez. Okay. If we could have the Pledge of Allegiance, Counselor Lutke, please.
Thank you, President Tamish. This evening, we have Ron Winner with us. Ron Winner served in the Marine Corps from 1970 to 1974. He spent a year at the Marine Aviation Training Support Group in Jacksonville, Florida, learning to be an avionics specialist. Ron worked specifically on A-4 Skyhawk aircraft. He spent 11 months deployed to Vietnam on the aircraft carrier USS America. Let's welcome Ron to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If you'd remain standing for a moment, for a moment of silence for those that you hold near and dear to you. Thank you. And I should have mentioned, if we could also include the four servicemen that just lost their life in Lithuania. Thank you.
And I just want to say thank you for all you do for our community, everybody.
Thank you. Okay. I'd like to open public comment. Public comment. Please sure—make sure that you sign in with your name and village for public comment. Public comment is three minutes. Please keep your comments brief and to the point. Welcome com—excuse me. Written comments are always welcome at council@town.barnstable MA.us and will be distributed to the entire council. I just wanted to note that we did receive some written correspondence. Michael White, representing the Cape Cod Technology Council in support of green communities; Maureen Hughes, Hyannis Port, in support of a Hyannis Port Historic District; Linda Pagnato from the National Railroad Historic Association, Cape Cod Branch, regarding CPC funding for the West Barnesville Trade Depot; and Carl Harrison, also in support of funding for the West Barnesville Trade Depot. And Ms. O'Connell.
Joanne O'Connell from Centerville, on behalf of the Centerville Civic Association. Good evening. The Centerville Civic Association has been looking into the disposition of the trees and plantings at the Centerville Playground. I've been in touch with Kelly Colopy for more information on this. She's reached out to Chris Gennella, the Community Service Director, the Playground Project Management Team, the Town Architect, and the Director of the DPW. I've been doing a little digging on the trees, no pun intended. We have information that the tree shrubs were donated by community members when the playground was first built. Does that make them private property? If yes, does the town have the right to put this out to bid as town-owned property? The fence in front of the recreational building in Arbor were donated by the Centerville Beautification Committee in 2006. The Playground Committee and community members raised close to $30,000 for beautifying the playground through fundraising such as selling advertising on placemats at a local restaurant, selling Plaques for the Tree of Life sign, and donors sponsoring benches in memory of loved ones. The playground and grounds have been a community effort dating back to the 1990s, and the town of Barnstable maintains the grounds and buildings. Maintenance has been mentioned as a problem. It is our understanding that drip line irrigation is regularly used to water newly planted vegetation. The irrigation lines are placed around the base of the trees and other plants. They're on timers. Once the lines are in place, there's little maintenance. Typically, the lines will be used for a year. There's also the option to leave the lines in place, covered by mulch, in the event of a drought. I sent this information to the councilors this afternoon, and I included a list of the trees and plantings that are at the park. And they include a five white spruce at the parking lot, which are 12 to 15 feet high, valued at $1,000 apiece; an eight-foot-large holly; a 16-to-18-foot Japanese cherry; large golden cypress, seven by six feet; deodar cedar, 15 feet tall. Raised beds are not compromised there. There's another Japanese holly; two rows of shereen; a Japanese cherry; two Japanese unimiss; one river birch; one spiria; and miscellaneous hydrangeas and sea grasses. So, the value of those plantings is quite high. Going forward, the CCA would like to suggest including language in contract negotiations that involve tree planting, removal, and replanting. Destruction should be the last resort. It's the easiest but makes the least sense. It's a shame that the trees and rhododendrons at Mother's Park were taken down to the ground. No work has started yet. If the trees had been left in place until work was imminent, they could have been saved and replanted. There are plenty of places in the town that can use a little beautification. New pump stations come to mind. Now, since I entered the room, I had a brief conversation with Manager Ells and Director Santos, and they are kindly going to sit down with members of the Centerville Civic Association to see what we can do to save what we can. We know that there are trees and plantings that are dangerous, that need to be removed, but anything that's viable, we believe, should be saved and reused. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connell.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name's Adam Burnett from Hyannis. I'm the Executive Director of Champ Homes over on School Street in Hyannis. Our mission is to provide transitional housing to adults on Cape Cod that are faced with homelessness or housing instability within our safe, compassionate, and respectful community. Champ Homes was started 35 years ago by former Town Councilor Paul Hebert and his lovely wife Carolyn, who, over 25 years of pouring their heart and soul into the organization and those we serve, changed countless lives. In our 35 years of existence, it's estimated that about 3,000 people or just north of that have stayed at Champ Homes at one time or another. They're given an opportunity to change the trajectory of their lives, and for that, we're forever grateful. I'm happy to report that our program participants in the past four years have averaged an 85% success rate, so they're moving on to long-term sustainable housing 85% of the time. Most are working or going back to school during their time as well. And while they do pay a community fee, they have skin in the game, our organization is supported by the community. It's supported by local donations and foundations and events that we put on. And I'm here to promote an upcoming event called our Fifth Annual Earth Day Cleanup of Hyannis. It's on Tuesday, the 22nd of April at 9:00 a.m. We're going to meet right outside at the Village Green. We anticipate about 75 to 100 volunteers. And we go and we clean up five to six miles' worth of roads, three beaches, the Village Green, the Overlook, Assleton Park, Ocean Street docks, the Korean War Memorial, the JFK Memorial, HICC, all of South Street, all of Main Street, all of North Street, all of the cross streets. For the past four years, we've collected between five and six cubic yards of trash on this day. And this year, we've decided that we could team up with the—or coordinate efforts with the Town DPW to—in an effort to save the town some money. So, I just wanted to promote our event and let everybody know that if they want more information or to volunteer that day, they can certainly look at our website, champhomes.org. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for that, and thank you for all you do. Any further public comment? Do we have online public comment?
Mr. President, we have Sandy Jones. Sandy, you have three minutes. You may unmute.
Thank you very much. My name is Sandy Jones. I'm from Park Avenue in Centerville, and I offer these comments on behalf of the Friends of the Centerville Cranberry Bog Preservation, Incorporated. The Friends organization was formed over four years ago by the town's citizens and taxpayers, who would want to preserve, protect, and maintain the valuable wetlands and open space located at 1246 Bumpsford Road in Centerville, locally known as the Jenkins Bog. Our efforts are ongoing to continue to enjoy support from hundreds of community members. Nearly a year ago, Counselor Starr expressed that the town seemed to have missed an opportunity to preserve the Jenkins Bog. His comments came during your discussion of the proposed guiding philosophies and goals now set forth in your strategic plan, which includes conserving and protecting areas in the town that are most significant as natural and historical resources for water supply, visual quality, outdoor recreation, public access, wildlife habitat, and cultural history. Shortly after that meeting, the Friends were alerted to you to point out that the Massachusetts Chapter Law—land laws already offer the town a statutory path for fulfilling this goal by encouraging preservation of forest, agricultural, and recreational lands through a tax enrollment program. In return for receiving a modified tax assessment from the town, private owners of enrolled land give the town a right of first refusal to acquire or to assign the right to acquire such lands, should their owners wish to sell, convert them, or to a different use. In the case of the Jenkins Bog, the Barnstable Land Trust has expressed its willingness to accept an assignment from the town. The laws mandate which town officials and entities must be notified of a proposed sale or conversion, and detail how the notice must be communicated. Unless these notice requirements are fulfilled, the right of first refusal is not triggered. According to the town's Open Space and Recreation Plan of 2018, which the Open Space Committee is updating, some 1,484 acres of land in the town are enrolled in Chapter Land Programs. Yet, the town still lacks a policy or defined process for considering the acquisition or disposition of these lands when their owners wish to sell or convert them. Town Manager Ells has acknowledged this situation. In his written communications from March 4th through March 17, 2022, Mr. Ells noted that the Chapter Land Laws require notice of sale or conversion be given to the seller, to the town manager, and to certain town boards, including the town council, so that the town may decide whether to exercise its right of first refusal and purchase the property or whether to assign that right to the Commonwealth or to a nonprofit conservation organization. Mr. Ells pointed out that the seller of the Jenkins Bog notified the town manager of their intent to sell the property, but did not provide the required notice of any of the town boards listed in the statute. He also pointed out that the Town Laws Department was preparing a draft internal process for the town to consider for future use when the town receives such notice. On March 10, 2025, the Open Space Committee heard from two fellow directors about the state of affairs. Committee members voiced a concern that the town remains without a policy three years after one was—had been developed. They also voted unanimously in favor of a motion to encourage the town council to adapt the policy as soon as possible. We urge the council to review, modify, adopt, and implement the town use for the model policy sent by the Friends to Mr. Ells and to Attorney Town—I'm sorry, Town Attorney Karen Nobur in March of 2022, to guide the town in connection with the proposed sale and conversion of Chapter Lands. Thank you for listening to me this evening.
Thank you. Any further online public comment? Seeing none? Do we have any council response to public comment? Counselor Lutke.
Thank you. First, to Joanne. Anybody who's raised kids in Hyannis, Centerville, Osterville knows how precious that playground is. It was always the place where we could make playdates when our kids were younger. It's absolutely gorgeous, and I thank Mr. Ells for communicating to you to try to save, because it is sad when you see mature landscape just destroyed when maybe it could have been saved. And I think anything we can do as a town to help that—it's the only playground that isn't connected with a school. And, you know, the ones with the schools are fine, except you can't go there during the school day. So, Centerville is a precious one. So, thank you for keeping us focused on that, and the town needs to stay with you on that and make sure we do our best at that playground. Adam, thank you. An amazing program, 85% success rate. That's impressive, and any kind of cleanup help is greatly appreciated. And Sandy, thank you. Absolutely. We need to stay on that and work on that as a council to make sure that we follow all the procedures going forward. So, thank you for keeping—you know, what a good comment you made, very well researched and studied. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment on my right? Any further comment on my left? I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. President Tamish, thank you for those who came to speak. I do want to acknowledge Sandy Jones's concerns, and I am assured by the town manager and Attorney Nobur that indeed the legal department is working on a process to address Chapter 61A and Chapter 61B properties. At this time, though, we have to give Attorney Nobur her time to deal with her personal —her personal loss. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comment on my left? Counselor Crowe?
I'd also like to thank Joanne. I think saving maturing plants is the economical way to go. You don't have to wait for them to be from a sapling. When they're already 15, 20 feet tall, it's something that's important to keep those trees. And also, as a councilor from a village that's also doing a playground, want to let you know that we're—I think all these playgrounds are very valuable to our communities, and we are just as interested in seeing the Centerville Playground go up as also the one in Osterville. So, if we can help in any way, or if I can, just let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Turkelson, did you have something?
It's all been said. I agree with everything. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Oh. Counselor Starr? Was it Penn? I'm sorry. Penn, Counselor Penn.
Yes, good evening. Thank you. For Sandy Jones, there was an ad hoc committee on land use opportunities for the town. It was never fully constituted, and it never met, because we had too many ad hoc committees meeting simultaneously. There's only so many bodies and manpower and resources we could deal with. So, I'm hoping that, as some of the committees will be sunsetting soon, that that committee would be reconstituted or constituted in the first place and continued, starting in 2025, to address and deal with policies such as exactly what you're asking for. So, I just wanted to put that reminder out there, and thank you for your input.
Thank you, Counselor Penn. Any further comment? Seeing none? Moving on to Town Manager Communications. You all received a copy of the Town Manager's Report. Just as a quick summary, included a budget calendar update. First read of the capital improvement plan is tonight. Town Manager provided written testimony for the draft intended use plan. Letter sent to Governor Healy requesting the environmental bond bill include $500 million to be used by the Clean Water Trust Fund to expand its borrowing limitations, which I think we have discussed last meeting. On March 6th, Town Manager attended a series of meetings with legislature and administrative staff in Boston regarding the status of Sagamore and Bourne Bridge projects. He also was invited to and attended the Resilient Mass Summit hosted by Governor Healy, Mayor Wu, and UMass Boston Chancellor up in Boston. The town of Plymouth, the APCC, and the town of Barnesville jointly filed with Mass DEP regarding pre-hearing memorandum of law regarding the nuclear power plant at Plymouth and the plan for Holtek Pilgrim, which is the decommissioning company, their plans, commenting on their plans for the plant. He's going to be attending as a panelist for a webinar by the Mass Municipal Association covering strategies to help municipal leaders launch and run a citizens academy. And I think the staff here is really to be commended for that. We have probably one of the best, both police, citizens academies, and town citizens academies in the area, and very glad to see he was asked to be a part of that board to discuss that statewide. Staff continues to meet with the MIT Renewable Energy Facility Siting Clinic Team. Just so everybody know, they're here on—available, rather, via Zoom on Friday afternoons, and you can request to have a slot made available for you if you'd like to comment on any of the sighting issues within the town. Kate Malandondo, Planning and Development Senior Planner, provided updates on the local comprehensive plan, the housing production plan, the digital equity plan, and the community development block grants, both online and in his report. And along those lines, we have put off some of our programs or projects, such as the Housing Production Plan. And there are going to be public hearings on the Housing Production Plan and the local comprehensive plan, and I'm just curious if anyone on the council, while we're discussing that issue, has anything further they'd like to see done as far as those, or we will certainly have those coming back to us after the public hearings. There's a number of them for both plans, but, you know, please make your wishes known as far as the further actions that need to be taken before those come to the council, so we don't have to keep referring things back to committees or hearings or whatever. So. Any questions for the Town Manager on those items? Counselor Lutke.
Yes, I'd like to hear a little bit more about the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Community Designation. Are we the only one, or are some other communities here on Cape Cod? And when I looked at this report, I went and, you know, clicked on some of your connections here, and I found the report about the Hyannis Harbor, which was a really nicely-done report. And that was done, I think, with money from this program, if I'm not inaccurate. And it was interesting to see, and, you know, I should have done more due diligence, but they had mentioned, you know, the property down adjacent to the Baxter's—we've had that discussion about Baxter's—would be an ideal location for a commercial fish operation. I mean, it was just quite something to read that. And I just wondered, where are we now with this? Are there still funds available? What's our next step? We have that beautiful study. Are we now moving forward, or what was the gist of the conference, Mark?
Well, certainly—and thank you, Mark Ells, Town Manager. Certainly, the issues of climate change, and then for all coastal communities and river basins—that was a very interesting aspect of that summit to discuss—are concerned about weather change, about sea level rise. To go right to your question, we've been participating in these sorts of issues for decades. More recently, our state government has looked for us to get certified in the preparation of a plan and become an MVP community so that it makes us eligible to access other resources. So, through our staff and led by our Planning and Development Department, we are a certified community in Massachusetts. We have 351 communities, cities and towns in Massachusetts, and I think they're approaching about 200 of them at this point, have gone through and are certified, because without it, you can't access the resources. Obviously, coastal Massachusetts and river basin areas are a primary focus. It was interesting to hear that, though we think often of the coastline, culverts and other drainage and flooding management structures around freshwater bodies were really a primary focus, given the fact that we're seeing more intense storms more frequently. And there were some significant issues in central Massachusetts last year that have resulted in almost—not a refocusing, but certainly a broadening of the focus to not just coastal. Our Planning and Development Director is here. If you'd like to ask more detailed questions about the plan, but we are actively engaging in evaluating everything from low-lying roads to where we put infrastructure, to our drainage structures throughout the community, and will continue to do so. And by being designated, some or a portion of the funding may be able to be accessed through the Commonwealth. So, you know, it's not going to go away. It's getting more difficult. These patterns of weather, whether it's us or whether it's, you know, nature that is creating them, are intensifying, and so as a coastal community, we're going to stay on top of this and, in doing so, try to provide as much resource other than our local tax base as we can. So, thank you.
No, that's good. I'm glad that we're really engaged with it. And I think I saw in that report—not that it's inland inland, but they had said west of the airport was also an area of concern. I remember reading that in the report. So, we have some areas that aren't just on the coastline. So, thank you. That sounds good. It sounds like we're doing the right thing.
Dams as well. That's the one besides the culvert that I forgot to say. We do have dams, believe it or not. So, thank you.
Any further discussion for the Town Manager? Online? No? Okay. Thank you. Could I have a motion to accept the minutes of the March 20th meeting, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. As we have councillors on Zoom, all roll calls tonight will be roll call votes.
Councillors, Bloom?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Lebec?
Yes.
Ledke?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to communications, elected officials, boards, committees, staff, et cetera. One thing I did want to announce is that several of the ad hoc committees have come up against their time, time that they should be making recommendations, and some of them have not completed their work as yet. So I will be extending to 6:30, the Committee to Review Town Council Rules and the Town Code. The Town Council Rules are done, the Town Code is not. The Committee to Review the Purpose, Composition, Functionality, and Effectiveness of the Standing Committees of the Town. The Committee to Assess and Recommend Strategies for Housing Creation. We don't have their report yet. Have they finished on?
We have finished. We're just waiting for the final report to sign off.
Okay. And the Committee to Recommend Policy with Respect to the Town's Acquisition and Disposition of Property and Development of Town-Owned Properties. Their deadline will be put out till June 30th, as we have the CIP in the budget right now. So that'll give them a little bit more time considering the amount of work that we have in front of us right now. Okay. Ms. Poyant, is Dr. Scheider available? We're going to be having an update on PER and PFAS. Be a lot easier trying to pronounce that. PFAS, research on Cape Cod and an update on that program. I'm never going to try to pronounce it. Oh, there she is. Welcome.
Hi. Hi. Good evening, everyone. Town Council President Tamish, Vice President Clark, and members of the council. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I'm going to go ahead and share some slides that I've put together here. So appreciate this opportunity to share with all of you a brief update about our Silence Spring Institute PFAS research here on Cape Cod. Apologies for not being able to be there in person tonight, but thanks for the opportunity to present remotely. I know many of you are familiar with our work at Silence Spring Institute, but I see some new faces here in the Town Council. So for those of you who aren't familiar with our work, we are an independent nonprofit research organization dedicated to understanding links between everyday chemical exposures and women's health with a particular focus on breast cancer prevention. We were founded by visionary activists from the Massachusetts Breast Cancer Coalition over 30 years ago. They were concerned to see elevated rates of breast cancer on Cape Cod and the islands, and they recognized the need for more research on environmental causes of breast cancer. So they successfully lobbied for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to provide funding to launch our organization. We are now a leading scientific research organization dedicated to understanding environmental causes of breast cancer. And I'm proud to partner with Cheryl Osomo and her team at Mass Breast Cancer Coalition on all of our federally funded PFAS research on Cape Cod. I joined Silence Spring in 2009. My background is in environmental chemistry and engineering and public health and community engaged research experience. Our team at Silence Spring has been studying endocrine-disrupting chemicals and other unregulated drinking water contaminants on Cape Cod since the 1990s to better, get a better sense of whether there are differences in terms of water quality on Cape Cod compared to other parts of the state. Our research has spanned looking at chemicals in septic systems, looking at ponds and estuaries, linking land use with the presence of endocrine-disrupting chemicals and pharmaceuticals and other unregulated contaminants, looking at the movement of contaminants through groundwater, and looking at drinking water quality. And so when I started in 2009, we were just launching a study on emerging contaminants. And at that point, I'd never heard of PFAS. They were not in the news. They really haven't gotten the level of attention and concern that they have now. So I'll walk through a quick timeline. I know many of you are quite familiar with the discovery process in Hyannis. Our work in 2010 on emerging contaminants was the first to discover PFAS in drinking water in Hyannis and in other public drinking water supplies on Cape Cod. This discovery was amplified by testing conducted by the EPA or required by the EPA in 2013 to 2015 that revealed that at that time, Hyannis had higher levels of PFAS in the public water than any other public water supply in Massachusetts and was in the top 1% compared to other water supplies in the country. The main sources come from the use of a certain class of firefighting foam called HLF, mainly sourced to the Barnstable County Fire Community Academy, as well as the Barnstable Municipal Airport. It has a new name now, the Gateway Airport. In 2016, Hyannis started to filter water to remove PFAS, and since that time, has installed a series of carbon filters to filter out the PFAS. So it's important for people to keep in mind that right now, all Hyannis water is being filtered to remove PFAS. So I wanted to provide an update tonight about the multi-site health study, and I have the opportunity to attend previous Town Council meetings to share updates throughout the process of this study. So the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention are funding research teams in states throughout the country to be part of what they call the multi-site health study. So it's funded by the CDC and by the Agency for Toxic Substances and Disease Registry. And the broad goal is to improve our understanding of how PFAS can affect our health. We do have a lot of information and really conclusive evidence that PFAS can be harmful to our health in many different ways, but there's still a lot that we don't know about how the timing of exposure matters, how different mixtures of PFAS can affect our health, and at what levels of exposure we might see some of these health effects. So across the seven sites, and you can see the states on the map there, the goal was to recruit 7,000 adults and 2,100 children evenly distributed across the sites for the study. And these sites were all based in communities like Hyannis that had experienced past PFAS drinking water contamination. So our study is called the Massachusetts PFAS in Your Health Study. It is led by Silence Spring Institute. I'm the lead research investigator on the study. We're partnering with Harvard School of Public Health and Eastern Research Group, and then our local partner on Cape Cod with Cheryl Osomo, Ben Ambivus, and others from Mass Breast Cancer Coalition. Our other community in the study was the town of Air, west of Boston, home of the former Fort Devens military base. And we had a local community partner there called Pace who helped support our recruitment. And we really couldn't have done this study without the terrific support from Mass Breast Cancer Coalition and from the town and from so many other people who made this work possible and from our participants. So just a brief timeline of the study. So we applied for this funding back in May of 2019, and we were awarded the grant in September of 2019. COVID introduced a lot of delays with the study, as you might imagine, with CDC responding to the COVID pandemic. So it took about two years to get the study protocols approved and ready to go. So we were able to launch recruitment in Hyannis in November of 2021. We began recruiting in Air in 2022 and continued our work in Hyannis. Across all of the sites, we all wrapped up data collection in September of 2023. For the participants who were in the study, we sent report back letters with information about the PFAS blood test results and other lab tests. And we sent all, we reported back to participants on a rolling basis. And by January of 2024, we had sent report back letters to all of our participants. Some of you may know, we conducted a pair of community meetings right there in Barnstable Town Hall last June to share the initial findings of our PFAS results among our Hyannis participants. And tonight, I'm just providing a brief overview and I can share links so that you can learn more about the study if you're interested. In Hyannis, our final study population included 385 adults and 41 children who completed all parts of the study. This included coming to our clinic and providing blood and urine samples and completing body measurements. We had an extensive questionnaire with information about health history, residential history, and questions about water consumption. And then for our children ages five to 17, they completed a series of neurobehavioral tests. And so far, the blood samples collected from our participants have been tested for PFAS, as well as other clinical lab tests. Some of them are routine, some of them are more specialized, things like blood sugar levels, cell counts, antibody levels. And we reported those results back to our participants. Some of the key findings that we shared at our community meeting, so, you know, there's a lot, a lot on this graph, so I'll walk you through it. What this is showing is the median level, and the median is kind of the middle level, so half of people were above and half were below. The median level in the blue bar, the median levels in Hyannis, the orange bars are for more participants in Air, and the gray bars are for the general US population from 2017 to 2020. And these are four different PFAS chemicals. And so I wanted to draw your attention to two of these chemicals, PFOS and PFHXS. These are two PFAS chemicals that tend to be elevated in the blood of residents of communities where the drinking water experienced firefighting foam contamination. And we see that same trend in Hyannis among our participants. What I'm showing here is that the median level for our Hyannis participants was three and a half times higher than the general population. For those of you who were at our meeting last June, you might notice the numbers are slightly different, and that's because we have more recent information about levels in the general US population. Fortunately, because these specific PFAS have been phased out of production, levels in the general population are going down over time. And so having more recent comparison provides a better comparison in terms of matching the same time. And then PFOS was also somewhat elevated, so the levels in Hyannis on average were 33% higher than the general population. For these other two PFAS, PFOA and PFNA, these were also detected in most of our participants, but the levels that we saw were pretty similar across our two communities and in the general population. And that's indicative of the fact that these were not as highly elevated in the drinking water in the past. I have a short timeframe tonight, so I'll point you to a link if you'd like to watch the video recording of our community presentation last year. I look at the slides. You can use that QR code or visit this link for more information. I wanted to also let you know what's next for the study. A study like this, it's a huge first step to collect all of the biological samples and all the questionnaire data, but there's still a long ways to go. One part of our study is to also try to go back in time and to reconstruct the levels of PFAS in the blood of our participants in the past. We know that when we're trying to make associations between exposures and health effects, it's important to have information about people's exposure before we have information about the health effects. For many of the types of health effects associated with PFAS, there's kind of a lag between when exposures happen and when we might expect to see an effect. But our study is what's called cross-sectional. So we asked about health effects at the same time that we were looking at their exposure. But our site and the other sites in the study have been tasked with going back in time. So going back to 2000 and estimating what was in the drinking water over time. We're grateful to Tom Cambrieri, who's been working with our team to conduct groundwater modeling and to the Hyannis water system that's been helping model the mixing of PFAS within the distribution system. So we've been going back in time to try to reconstruct what the levels were in the PFAS, of PFAS in the drinking water, and putting that together with information about where our participants lived, were they participants who mostly drank bottled water, filtered water, or unfiltered tap water. And then we have a model where we can predict for a certain amount of ingestion of PFAS from drinking water, what that might mean in terms of their blood levels. And this will allow us to get a better understanding of the links between PFAS exposures and a wide range of health effects. So that work is still ongoing. And then there are other components of our study where we have members of our team conducting extensive data analysis. So our site and data from the other seven sites as well, or six sites, and then the P study, which was the pilot phase for the study, have all been combined. And ATSDR is close to publishing a paper that will present across all of the sites what the average levels were, so we can see how our Massachusetts site compares to the other sites within the study. Our team is really actively working to better understand how PFAS can affect blood pressure and hypertension, as well as metabolic syndrome. So we're leading two of the key publications that combine the results from our Massachusetts participants with all those other participants. And there's over 5,000 adults and 700 kids from all the sites combined. So it's quite a large study and a lot of data to analyze. We're also looking at the data from our two communities in Hyannis and Air, looking at relationships between where people lived, their residential history, their water-related behaviors, if they drank bottled water, whether they had a water filter or not, and their blood levels. And even though the water in Hyannis had been filtered for a number of years before we started our study, we are still seeing that the levels of PFAS in our participants is still elevated compared to the general population. And so we're able to quantify sort of how long and the time scales that those levels might remain elevated. And then the results from our Massachusetts participants are also feeding into a whole other series of studies that are being led by the other teams within the project. So there are papers that are also looking at diabetes, cardiovascular disease, dyslipidemia, just high cholesterol and other lipids, the neurobehavioral test results in children, thyroid function and others. So there is some work that we're able to lead, but the real value of the study is that the results from all the sites are being combined together. Having a large study population provides us more statistical power to learn more about these associations. I wanted to let you know about several of our other studies. I have shared before about our PFAS exchange, which is an online resource center that we've developed, is part of one of our other studies called PFAS Reach. Our website is designed with community members in mind, as well as any audience looking to learn more about PFAS. We've got fact sheets, we've got a community map that shows known and likely sources of PFAS contamination all across the country. We've got a tool to help people interpret results of water and blood tests. We've got information about how to access PFAS blood testing and resources for clinicians. We know that often people will go to their doctor with questions about their PFAS exposures. Clinicians are trusted sources of information about health effects. However, because PFAS are a relatively new topic, many clinicians haven't really heard about PFAS much and aren't aware of the extensive body of information showing links between PFAS exposures and health effects. So we've developed a continuing medical education course and medical screening guidance to inform discussions between clinicians and patients. I also wanted to share with you some updates about our STEEP project. So STEEP is Sources Transport Exposure and Effects of PFAS. It's led by the University of Rhode Island and in partnership with Harvard University and Silence Spring Institute. I co-lead the Community Engagement Corps for STEEP, together with Emily Diamond of University of Rhode Island, and we're working with Mass Breast Cancer Coalition, the Sierra Club, Cape Cod and the Islands Group, and the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe to conduct locally relevant research and community engagement. This is an example of some of the resources that have been developed by the team at URI for communicating tips about how to reduce exposures. And I wanted to highlight that we're hosting a webinar in two weeks on fish and water contamination on the Cape. The featured speakers will be Heidi Picard, who recently graduated with her PhD from Harvard, talking about one of her studies on PFAS and fish on the upper Cape and water bodies impacted by joint base Cape Cod. And the town's very own Markell's will be talking about how the town of Barnstable has responded to PFAS. So there's some information here about how you can join. We had our first webinar last month, talking about PFAS and household exposures and local responses in around the Hyannis area. Resources are available on the STEEP website. So to let you know what's ahead, and if there's time for questions or a discussion, I would welcome that. In terms of what's next for our research and community engagement on the Cape, we are planning to conduct some sampling in the Hyannis area of yard soils and homegrown produce. We do get questions from residents about whether the past PFAS water contamination has led to elevated levels of PFAS in yard soils and whether there are any concerns about PFAS being taken up by plants people are consuming from their gardens. We are also aiming to conduct some additional fish and shellfish testing. We are also aiming to conduct some additional fish and shellfish testing. Part of our work has been in close collaboration with the Mashpee-Wampanoag Tribe and water bodies and types of fish that are of cultural significance to members of the tribe. We would like to amplify our outreach to clinicians, particularly in the Hyannis area. We're also excited to be engaging more with youth, the next generation. Members of the high schools in Barnstable were really instrumental for the recruitment that we did for the ME PFAS near health study. So, we have some high school classroom visits coming up, both in Barnstable and Falmouth. I think it goes without saying that it's really a challenging time for those of us doing research, for those of us who care about public health, hugely concerned about the potential for rollbacks of the new EPA drinking water standards that were finalized just last year, and all kinds of other regulatory rollbacks, which will affect many communities. As an organization, we rely really heavily on federal research grants. We get over half of our funding from federal grants, and that those now are in jeopardy. We're concerned that federal funding just won't be available for the type of work that we do in the future. For the multi-site studies specifically, I feel so much empathy for the members of the study team at CDC and ATSDR, where there's been layoffs and just a lot of uncertainty about their ability to support the study in the future. So, wrapping up here, some discussion questions to leave with. I'd love to think more about how Silent Spring Institute and our research team can work with all of you on the town council and the leadership of the town of Barnstable, and how can we better address the concerns of residents in Barnstable. So, thank you again for this opportunity tonight, and here's my email address and our Silent Spring website, so you can learn more about our work.
Thank you, and thank you for your work. Thank you for Silent Spring. I think that you and the coalition and actually the town of Barnstable and the DPW have kind of been at the forefront of all this and really spurring this on. So, thank you, and thank you for the Director Santos and Town Manager Els for their work also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further? Counsel Lutke.
Hey, Dr. Shader, Betty Lutke here. Couple of questions. You showed that slide where you talked about the elevated levels. You talked about the PFHXS being related to the foam, 3.5 times higher, and the PFOS, 33 percent. Is there any kind of relationship of PFOS, or is that a group of things? Anything you can pin on that, or PFOS is just a broad category?
Yeah, good to see you again. So, PFAS is the acronym that stands for the whole family of chemicals. Over 14,000 different chemical compounds are classified as being PFAS. I know the terminology gets kind of tricky. So, PFHXS is one specific PFAS chemical. PFOS is another one. So, those are two out of the over 14,000. So, those two chemicals in particular, because they were used quite often in firefighting foams, tend to be the ones that accumulate in the blood of people who have been exposed to water contaminated by firefighting foam.
Okay, so, yeah, that I misunderstood. So, both of those are related to the A triple F. The second question I have is, I'm very interested in your yard soil and homegrown produce study, only because in Hyannis, all of our wells pull PFAS. We have them all filtered, as you pointed out at the beginning. We have clean water, now it's all filtered. But because it is everywhere, but of course, those wells are very deep, in some cases over 100 feet, it'd be interesting to know, you know, what's happening at the surface. And, you know, a lot of people do the homegrown vegetables and things. So, do you think that's something that's going to happen sooner rather than later? And is there anything broad you can say right now in terms of Hyannis or our groundwater that, you know, just because our wells are pulling it at the more towards the surface level, does that mean it's there? Or do you have to do studies to come to any conclusions?
Great, yeah, thanks for that question. So, we have not done any yard soil sampling yet. The question we're trying to answer is whether, over the years where the PFAS hadn't yet been recognized as a concern in the drinking water, people were irrigating their soils with water that had high levels of PFAS, because the PFAS are highly persistent and some of them stick to soils. We think that it's possible that there has been an accumulation of PFAS in surface soils in the Hyannis area. The water now is being, the PFAS are being filtered out, so we don't think that there's new PFAS being added from the water now, but we think there could be a legacy from the past contamination of the water supply. And some of the work that we're doing in terms of modeling PFAS within the distribution system suggests that because the water doesn't mix centrally, that there were differences in the levels of exposure, and that people who lived closer to the Mary Don Wells, over time, we think that they probably had higher exposures than people that lived on the south side of town. So, our first step would be to conduct some soil sampling and start to get a sense of whether the levels are elevated. And we'll be happy to keep you in the loop as we move forward with that part of the project.
Oh, that's, I didn't think about that. Of course, the irrigation using that water, that it might collect over years, of course, that's where it would come from. And I will say, I appreciate the town of Barnstable that we incinerate our sludge. Not all municipalities in Massachusetts do that, and I know there's been a lot of problems with sludge being put on farmers' fields, and they've had to abandon their farms because of that. So, that's something we do. We're at the forefront of that. So, I commend the town for doing that. And thank you for these continual updates. We hope that you'll keep a surprise. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice President Clark.
Thank you very much, President Tamish, and thank you very much, Dr. Shader, for your comprehensive update. Question to you is, with this increased awareness of PFOS in our community, would you happen to know if our county lab can provide water tests for PFOS? Or where is, what is the pathway for residents to have their water tested? Thank you.
Great, thanks for your questions. Nice to see you again. So, yes, the county lab now has the capacity to measure PFAS in well-water samples. In the past, the lab had been in the process of building up their capacity, but could still send samples out to a laboratory, but the lab is now able to offer that type of testing.
Good news, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Turkles.
Thank you, Vice President Tamish. I'm just curious if, I know that we've removed the exposure in our water, and I know there are chemicals in, say, our products, in what kind of pans we use, but do we expect, has there been a study to show that if we remove as much of our exposure as we can, that over time, we will see a decrease of PFAS in our blood? And how long would that take if somebody was to remove the main sources from their exposure?
Great, thank you for that question. And this is a question I've heard before. We, PFAS are sometimes described as forever chemicals, and some people worry that that means that the PFAS will just stay in their bodies forever. The forever part means that the chemicals themselves, chemical structures are very resilient, and they don't break down. Fortunately, our body over time does, is able to excrete the PFAS. For PFOS, PFHXS, the ones that were on that graph that I showed, that process is very slow. So, for instance, for PFHXS, where we saw the most elevation compared to the general population, the amount of time that it takes for the level in your blood to go down by half is something like seven years. So, we do see levels can go down in the general population. CDC has been tracking levels over time and has seen that the levels are coming down slowly, but surely. So, we do think, well, we know that over time, the levels will go down. But like I said, for PFHXS, which spends the longest time in our bodies, it takes about seven years for the level to go down to half, and then that same amount of time to go down to a quarter, and then the same amount of time to go down to an eighth. PFOS is somewhat quicker, more like four years, and PFOA is two to three years. So, the good news is that cutting off the exposure sources does, over time, mean that the levels in people's blood will go down.
And those people that participated in these studies, will they be tracked over time for this kind of data to see the clearing of the blood, of the levels in their blood?
I would very much like to be able to track some of our participants over time. We currently don't have funding to do that, but I think it's really important to do that type of follow-up, to see how long it takes for the levels to diminish, and also do some longer-term follow-up in terms of health effects.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Penn.
Yes, thank you. I'm glad to see your resources, clinicians are on your list. As an oncology patient here at Cape Cod Hospital, I hope you will be able to have a presence and present over there, to their oncology department, which is full of excellent people, but it sure would be interesting to know what percent of their patients have elevated PFAS levels. Just as, just because they're already, it's already part of the population that has an issue, obviously. It's not just breast cancer, it's all cancers. But, so you're already dealing with a friendly group, I would say. But many of the clinicians over there, even though they personally have read about PFOS, you know, just what they know in their general knowledge, I don't think it's targeted to their work necessarily. And I just always thought that it would be a great idea, so I'm glad that we've taken first steps. I hope the funding holds. There sure would be an important statistic to run up. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Penn, and I have had the opportunity to speak to the Cape Cod Healthcare Pediatricians Group on several occasions to provide updates about our study, and I would definitely welcome any opportunities to speak with the oncology department and to others at Cape Cod Healthcare. So, would welcome any invitations or connections along those lines. Thank you for that.
Thank you. And you've heard the questions or discussions? No? Well, thank you, Dr. Shader. As always, a pleasure.
Thank you so much. Good to see everyone.
Thank you. Bye now.
Bye.
Okay, moving on. I'd like to invite Jim Cupfer up. Counsel, discussion on accessory dwelling units. Try to nail down some of these things before we come up for a vote on the accessory dwelling unit, so. Jim, you're going to give us a short presentation? Are you, or just going to be open to questions?
I think the idea was to be open for questions. Happy to go over anything in general that you may have, or anything specific.
Okay. Okay, this is our opportunity to, we have Attorney LaRosa, Attorney Connolly, I believe, and Mr. Cupfer, if anyone has any questions. Anything on my left, Counsel Crowe? Have any questions or anything you want to bring up?
There's a lot here. Maybe questions, I think maybe it'd be better to go through these one at a time and then discuss what the implications of each one are, of these amendments that were put through. So, maybe you can facilitate that conversation.
So, I'm happy to do so. However, the hearing itself is continued to May 17th, so I believe the discussion was to answer any general questions, so Attorney Connolly and myself can be prepared to present anything on May 17th.
Yeah, I think, John, if Counselor Crowe, if you had a specific question, I mean, if you want to ask specific questions about any of them for the rationale, perhaps?
I do, I'm just not prepared for the way we're doing this right at this moment, but...
Do you want me to pass?
I'll pass, I'll pass right now.
Counsel Lutke then?
I can start out. Okay, something, you know, to look at for May. What I'm uncomfortable with in this entire program, and I kind of look at these in context of the Accessory Affordable Apartment Program, which I see is called, like, what is it called? An amnesty program? You know, goes back to 2000, when, you know, we were raiding people's houses and ripping out apartments and things, and we came up with this, well, maybe they could keep it if they do it affordable, you know, under the 40B. I'd like to have a really good understanding of the difference between an accessory affordable apartment and an ADU, because I see them as interchangeable. I do, and I just wonder, you know, that was kind of a way to get around an awkward situation, but again, that's 25 years ago now. You know, maybe we can learn from that and move forward in a more coordinated way, so that we don't have that awkward understanding. I mean, I think it's good that we target those for our affordable folks, but an ADU doesn't have those restrictions. So, I really think when we come forward in May, I'd like a really clear understanding of how these two programs integrate, and how maybe we can link them and go forward in a coherent way. The other thing that I find puzzling is the lack of data and the lack of maybe enforcement. I looked on, you know, some of our material online, and we have on the application for an ADU, it says, when you sign it here, it says, "I understand that verification of a long-term rental agreement, such as a copy of a lease, may be requested at the request of town officials." It's so nebulous there. And I know in our current ordinance, we have nothing having to do with enforcement. So, I would like, again, a thorough understanding of what is the enforcement mechanism? Are we monitoring these? I have some understanding that we have 44 of them. If we're not enforcing or monitoring, how do we know we have 44, and how do we know they exist? Can we possibly reach out and understand these 44? And going back to my first point, can we understand those in the context of how many accessible, affordable apartments we have? I think we need to get a sense of our situation before we move forward. I don't think it's reasonable to move forward without understanding where we are, and I don't think we understand where we are. So, those are my two concerns. So, it's kind of a heavy lift, but I'd like to reach out. I don't even know if we have a mech, I mean, that's so nebulous. Some town office will reach out to you. You know, I don't know what's going on with these, if these exist. And it seems like, you know, with the accessory affordable ones, you can go in and out of that. I mean, I've seen the hearings, I think Jake Dewey is like the only person that here, he's like the guy, and they just say, "I'm out of it," or "I'm in it," and out they go. And then I think in there we have that you have to rip out the kitchen, and it just seems like draconian. I think we ought to maybe move forward in a way that's not so draconian. We do have a housing crisis. This is a great way to approach it at a very modest level, and I think we ought to move forward in a, as I say, a more coordinated fashion. And the last piece I'll bring up, two to look at, is, I do have a friend who wanted to do this, and she was told that she can't do it because she's in a three-bedroom zone. And we met with an individual from the Board of Health who showed a map of, I guess it's wellhead protection, there's pink and green, and then some slashed red on there. So, we've really handicapped a lot of our residents. We say, "You can do this," and then they say, "Gosh, I want to do that. I want to do a year-round rental, I want to do that," and then they can't do it. So, I'd like that addressed too, in some of these areas, and these, and again, these are people in my precinct, the preponderance of which will never be sued. So, they're out of this program. So, I think we need to be understanding of that. Maybe that should be addressed in there, so we don't give people some false hope that they can participate in this when they never will be able to. So, maybe, you know, that's such an overwhelming issue with our municipality is, you know, the nitrogen loading and that. So, those are the three things. Thank you.
Mr. President, if I may, real quick?
Sure.
Just briefly, and we'll be prepared to speak to each of these items, but I did want to just touch on a couple of things real quick. So, the monitoring and inspections, that is through Inspectual Services, they have a very good handle on which ones are current rentals and those units and what types of units they are. So, certainly, I know Building Commissioner Brian Florence is here, but you can certainly speak to that when we get to the hearing. We do have things like family apartment, accessory affordable dwelling units, the existing ADU, and soon to be the state-recommended ADU, which would take our current ADU's place. They are different, and so they could work together. And again, we can speak to this more eloquently at our next meeting, but there are nuances to each of them, and it's really an evolution of zoning, and that's what zoning is. It evolves over time, and, you know, in the 80s, 90s, we were... And, you know, in the 80s, 90s, we were a little skittish, and this wasn't just Barnstable, but it was the Commonwealth as a whole was a little skittish about adding apartments. But, you know, we wanted to age in place, or we had someone who had medical concerns. And so that was a very unique nuanced way to get a family apartment. So we have specific special permits for each one of those that actually indicates the individual and the rationale as to why. The accessory affordable was, again, another dip your toe in the water to see if we're okay with ADUs. And we said, "Well, you could, but they need to be deed-restricted affordable." So now that the by right ADUs have come online, a lot of individuals have said, "Well, why would I burden the property with a deed restriction if I can do this by right?" So certainly, a number have taken advantage of that opportunity. And now with the state's mandated ADU ordinance, this is, again, another evolution of the ADU. But we could talk about it comprehensively at the next meeting. And in addition, we'll certainly come prepared to speak to how it interplays with all the different regulations we have in town. So if you're not on sewer, much of our town is under that saltwater estuary ordinance. So yes, there are limitations to bedroom counts, and that applies to the ADU ordinance. So there will be additional requirements above and beyond just that of the ADU ordinance. And we do have some educational material, and we certainly could beef it up more. We do enjoy when individuals do come into the office because we can walk them through each one of those and talk about how they all interact and whether or not it may be worth your time or not, perhaps. But yes, we can come prepared for each of those. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Burdick, did you have some...
Oh, I just was going to say, isn't it most of that moot now as a result of the new state guidelines? Doesn't it dictate? So wouldn't many of those things be redundant to begin with?
I would say many are going to take advantage of the more permissive ordinance that the state is mandating.
Right. And that's why, should we even...
Still have them?
Yeah. Why bother?
So that's a question. I want to understand.
Yeah, I just, I want to understand the scope of each program, who's in what, how many, success. I just, I think we need to be informed by data. I do. Why would someone do that when they can do an ADU? I don't know. It's...
Well, that's kind of what I'm saying. It's clear that there's no reason to now. Those should just, we should, the discussion should be, just, should we, how do we strike those in order to just be compliant?
Yet there's still people in that program, so...
Thank you. Any further questions? Am I right? Counselor Turkleson?
I do recall watching, probably about a year ago now, people coming forward, I think to the ZBA, I'm thinking it was ZBA, to retroactively have more than 900 square-foot apartment dwellings, I'm assuming by special permit, to be able to have those. So say you had a garage apartment that was illegal, and you're now wanting to make that legal, and it was more than 900. So would those have been coming under the accessory affordable apartment, or would those just have been an ADU that was above the 900 square feet that the town allowed prior to the new legislation?
Yep. So that's actually a common submission to the Zoning Board of Appeals. And we talked to each one of them about the probability, though we can't discourage them from submitting. The Zoning Board historically has taken a fairly hard line on accessory dwelling units that are above and beyond that 900 square-foot limitation, with the exception of, I think, what you're referring to as an existing structure that might already be in place and they're renovating essentially the interior of it. And so the Zoning Board has historically, over the past few years, considered those. And that is in our current ordinance, and I believe proposed in the additional changes to stay, is that if it's above 900 square feet, you still can proceed, but through a special apartment, it's not by right. And the Zoning Board certainly is looking for, has expressed some concerns about further guidance about what should that criteria be. And I believe the thought is, after we adopt and get in accordance with the state law, we would sit down with the Zoning Board, maybe a working group, and try and hash out exactly what those suggested criteria could be. Because as you pull that thread, maybe some more criterias may come to light. We do offer one suggested change, and that is for any existing structures can be applied for through special apartment. So essentially discouraging those that are new build that would be above 900 square feet, because we have a hard line at this time at the 900 square feet.
And the other thing, I would also like to see that map, because I happen to be here in the switching of the meetings, and just to kind of run us through how, depending on where you live, whether that is allowed or not. I think that's important. In the other thing, you know, looking at it is, there might be properties where the setbacks might not allow for an ADU. I'm not sure if that's true or not, but if you have a super small lot, and if there are minimum setbacks, would that then impact whether somebody can have an ADU? So kind of going back to Counselor Lutke's point, that it's not everybody can have one because it might even be the lot size. There might be infrastructure and sewer that allows for it, but that may be the actual lot size. So, you know, considerations that we, our residents, might need to know. And I am just still confused a little bit about, you know, if you're in a zone that doesn't have sewer, isn't planned to sewer. We've been told that we have to have a certain amount of land, and we can only have a certain amount of bedrooms and those kinds of things. And like, how does that interplay? Because now we're adding a potentially a whole new septic system onto a piece of property. So just the ramifications of that, just because I find that confusing. I understand, like, in my neighborhood, I'm going to be getting sewer, so maybe I'm thinking I'm going to wait to put an ADU because I'm going to have sewer, and I can plan for that, and I can hook into the sewers. I'm not such a problem. But if I was in Glen Eagle, they're not planned to ever be sewered, so that might be different. So just would like to understand how that, the sewered families and the non-sewer, how those work for the residents and the ability to be able to do what they need to do. I did ask somebody at that meeting when we were switching up that, about, what does it mean about removing a bedroom? What does that actually look like for the resident? Sounds like it means you have to go in your house, cut a door out, make it wider, and do those kind of modifications, and our building inspectors come in and look at that. So just maybe some education on what that would be like for a resident if you have a three-bedroom septic and you want to put a two-bedroom ADU and you can't have increased septic capacity, what that would look like. So, thank you.
Absolutely. We can be prepared for that.
Counselor Crowe?
Jim, I have a question. I was prepared to go through this and on the benefits of each particular amendment, which is in alternative amendments and everything else. But asking questions, the Amendment 2 deals with how many, not being able by the state now to determine how many bedrooms are in a 900-square-foot ADU. I'll read our, the Town Code 593, maximum number of occupants, which is the Town Code. It says, "The maximum number of occupants in a residential dwelling shall be determined by the number of bedrooms contained therein. A maximum number of two occupancies is permitted for each of the first two bedrooms. For each additional bedroom, maximum number of one occupant is permitted." But what I'd like to ask is that, since the state says you cannot limit the number of bedrooms in an ADU, but in Barnstable, the occupancy limits in a home is tied to the number of bedrooms, as I saw in the, I just mentioned in the code. This seems to be sort of an unfunded directive by the state to ignore septic capacity while the state is not funding sewers at this time, or we're in a flux about what they're going to do. And this also seems to raise the need to enforce occupancy limits so as not to overtax septic system. I think on this one, the question is, isn't the right answer would be go back to the state legislatures and amend the law? Because since we're still on sewers by the majority and will be for the foreseeable future in some areas, it seems that we're, this would be allowing overcrowding of existing septic systems. So I think that's something that we need to look into and ask maybe the state to amend the law, because they're, really, do state legislators from the Cape and the governor really believe unsewered Barnstable should have 900-square-foot ADUs or bigger on any and all lots with three or four bedrooms by right? And that mandate will not put our septic system environment at risk? I think it will. This sounds like an unfunded mandate with real consequences until it comes with funds for sewers, and until then, funds for occupancy enforcement to protect septics in our waters. So I think that's a major question here, that we're being forced to do something that works in a city, but not necessarily in a sewered town like ours.
Okay. Thank you. And yes, we'll come prepared to speak to building code, number of occupants, septic capacity, how it interplays with other ordinances and the Board of Health regulations. We'll certainly be, come prepared to speak to that.
Counselor Turkleson?
Thanks. I forgot one other question. There was the question about parking related to the half a mile around a bus station. The question is, is does RTA bus stops count as bus stations? So I know there was some question about that. So I don't know if there's any guidance from the state, or, but that would be, you know, obviously, half a mile from the RTA everywhere the RTA stops is pretty much a lot of Barnstable. So just wondering how that impacts the parking concept in relation to that part of the ADU requirements.
Yep. And we did get further guidance. We can speak to it more. But yes, it does apply. But I would say our current ordinance doesn't actually require a number of parking spaces required. It simply says that you need to accommodate those on your property, so not on the street today. So this would actually be increasing the required number of parking spaces with the state requirement there.
Okay. Counselor Crowe, good.
Jim, I have a follow-up on that one. The state rules say, the terms defined under 760 CMR 7102, .02, it says, "Bus station, a location serving as a point of embarkation for any bus operated by a transit authority." Looking up embarkation in Merriam-Webster's, it says, "To go onboard a vehicle for transportation." From my interpretation, that means any bus stop.
Yep. Yes. Yes, sir.
Okay. So that, any bus stop throughout Barnstable, which is a large area within a half-mile, I'd say that's, could be a majority of certain areas, that there wouldn't be any parking requirements for an ADU. And I think that's a problematic area.
Counselor Burdick?
It was just a follow-up to what Counselor Burdick and I were discussing. And I thought I read, and I don't know if it's still true, that the CPC provides loans for the affordable apartments, affordable accessory. I don't know if that's still true. You know, it was a fairly low number, 20,000 to 30,000. But if we are looking at what was recommended here, and I think it's, would be a positive thing to merge these two programs, perhaps that gives incentive. I don't know if we have the same kind of loan structure for ADUs, but that would be an incentive. The CPC is still doing that program for those to market to affordable, something to consider. I'm just not sure how active that program is. Do we have anybody taking advantage of those loans? I'd be interested to know if that loan is, program is active.
Nope. I'm sorry, go ahead.
And then the other thing, based on the parking, you know, if we do mandate off street, like maybe Director Florence could look at, you know, do we turn our yards into parking lots like we've done in many of the neighborhoods? Are we then exacerbating that with this to say, "Well, I'll just take out another piece of the yard"? I mean, we have some yards that are all parking lots now. I'd like to kind of look at that piece to see if we have to cross-reference that, to think, you know, is that, should that be considered in terms of any of our ordinances that have to do with how much parking can be taken up in a yard? So before we say that, you know, just put something off-street, let's think of the ramifications of that.
Counselor Burdick?
Is everyone, everyone's all done? Mine is not a question or a direction to Jim, but more of a, to the council, or, I don't know, a reality check, a philosophical. This is the law now. This new ADU legislation has passed and ratified, and, you know, though we may find it uncomfortable or we have a lot of questions about it, we are still required to comply with it. So though, you know, we bring up a lot of these things, but it's not our responsibility or nor do we have the authority to change any of these things. So I question the validity of spending a lot of time discussing things that we have no control over. So philosophical point.
Thank you. Counselor Bloom?
Jim, I'm not sure where this belongs, but the Barnstable Clean Water Coalition, their last newsletter, they came up with an idea to offer incentives for EIA systems to, new ADUs that are being built. And given that a lot of the town is going to be in areas where there will be no sewer-ing, is there some way we can mandate EIA systems with these ADUs that are, that may be coming online, if people have the finances to build them? I think we're in a, in a situation where we really need to do whatever we can for nitrogen and phosphorus pollution. Who knows, you know, what the current administration in Washington, you know, what kind of money will lose, what it'll do to the sewer-ing project, and, you know, maybe these EIA systems are an answer.
Counselor Mendez?
Thank you, President Tamish. Seth kind of stole my thunder. But to kind of piggyback on what Counselor Lutke said, I think for any of this to work, we really, really, really have to have compliance. We have to have inspectors and so on and so forth, make sure that people aren't parking on their lawns. We need enforcement. We're tied to what the state says, but in the same token, we can enforce our own regulations so people aren't parking on yards and stuff. Because as she said, you drive around town, a lot of, you know, front yards have become parking lots. So I think it's us more incumbent to work on enforcement and follow the state's lead, because that's the only choice we really have. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Crowe?
Yeah. First, in answering to Counselor Burdick, if you look through this very carefully, there are rules, laws, of course, the state has put forward, that we, that are, we have to accept, there's no question about it. But if you look through this entire document, there is numerous choices we get to make with what is already the law that's coming down. And I think it's important that these are looked at very seriously because they have different effects on each one of them. We're not going to go on that tonight, but when the argument comes down, and we have Amendment 6 and 6A, or 4 and 4A, 1B, and all those other things that don't require, that are in compliance with the law, but gives us choices as a town council. I would like to also say, ask you about Amendment 7. It says to amend item number 2025060 by amending the following Section 10, but it doesn't have a whole section here for us to read. So I think it would be, if it were possible, that we could have that for the next time so we can see what's being changed and what's not, and that would help.
Any further discussion? Seeing none? Seeing none online? All right. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you all so much. And I'm always available if anybody wants to stop in and ask additional questions. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Counselor Turkleson?
Thank you, President Tamish. The Appointments Committee would like to remind residents that there will be committee appointments expiring at the end of June. This committee has made the decision on process again this year, that if there's an application for an expiring seat, that the current member of the committee will be asked to re-interview. Automatic reappointment is not a guarantee. This gives committees a chance to have new residential applicants, and we hope that residents will apply for the many committees expiring 6/30/2025. As a result of this proactive... expiring 6/30/2025. As a result of this proactive outreach, we've already heard that there will be vacancies on the following standing committees of the town. The Planning Board, the Comprehensive Financial Advisory Committee, the Council on Aging, the Recreation Commission, the Hyannis Main Street Waterfront Historic District Appeals Committee, and there are currently openings on Infrastructure and Energy Committee, the Open Space Committee, and the Disability Commission. We look forward to new candidate applications, which can be found on the Town of Barnstable website under the Boards/Committees tab. Hit the blue hyperlink that reads Boards, Committees, and Commission vacancies, and scroll down and hit Application Form. You can also reach out to your town counselor from your precinct for help or Cynthia Lovell. And the appointments might not be the most exciting meeting to watch, but I recommend you tune in to see the level of expertise and depth of knowledge that our residents have. This committee and this council is grateful for those offering their time and expertise to become involved in our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Clark?
Thank you very much, President Tamish. I'd just like to announce that this coming Saturday at the town's transfer station, there will be the very first of four hazardous, household hazardous waste collection days from nine in the morning till noon this coming Saturday. They are all Saturdays. So that is the first opportunity of the year. And also happening on Saturday is the West Barnstable Annual Spaghetti Supper from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. And it's held at the West Barnstable Fire Station. You park at the West Barnstable Community Building and take the shuttle van over. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Bloom?
Just to add on to what Kristin said about the, we have an opening in Conservation Commission too. I regret to say that Louise Foster, who's been a great member of this committee for a long time, and she's going to be moving to New Hampshire. So we have an opening there.
Thank you. Anything further? Seeing none, seeing none online? We will move on to the orders of the day. Old business. Could I have a motion to move 2025 143 to May 15th?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Moved to second. Madam Clerk?
Counselors, Burdick?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crow?
Yes.
LeBeck?
Yes.
Lutke?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Levin, yes.
Thank you. Under new business, we are going to have a short presentation or a presentation. I don't know how short. Mr. Milne, Mrs. Sproul, Town Manager Els, I don't know what order you'd like to go in, gentlemen. And Mr. Gunther.
Good evening. Mark Els, Town Manager. Thank you for this opportunity to make, you know, I, I felt it important after consultation with my Finance Director, Assistant Town Manager, Legal Department, and staff, going into this capital improvement plan review and hopefully approval, that given the volatility of the marketplace right now, I just wanted to alert the council to some of the unique challenges we'll have this year. So what we've done basically, and it's been literally in recent days, is to come up with a strategy for considering how to manage costs, given the changing market environment surrounding implementation of the FY 2026 Capital Improvement Plan. And so our objective here is to notify the town council of the market volatility surrounding the implementation of certain projects in the capital improvement plan due to financial uncertainty caused by newly approved tariffs affecting the costs of materials, equipment, supplies. In this will ensuring fiscal responsibility and minimizing fiscal risk. Projects addressing the replacement of assets, assets expected to fail, and projects whose costs are not expected to be impacted by such tariffs would be exempt from this specific action that I'm going to just cover briefly with you. I'll also end with additional or next steps relevant to it. Some key considerations here. Assessing the direct and indirect financial impacts of the tariffs on project cost. Cost estimating in the FY 2026 CIP was completed prior to changes in the marketplace. Until projects are bid, the impacts on cost estimates are difficult to estimate and therefore may result in unanticipated cost increases. Maintaining organizational flexibility to adjust to plans as economic conditions evolve. Identifying and exempting projects that involve the replacement of critical assets, assets expected to fail, and those whose costs are not expected to be impacted by change in the marketplace. Again, I've already stated that, but it's another key consideration. These projects should proceed to bid, and if impacted by changes in the marketplace, additional funding shall be requested at that time before the bid is awarded. Communicating clearly with stakeholders, including citizens, employees, and regulatory bodies about the rationale for the pause that we're, we're taking here to look at this changing marketplace condition and potential future actions that, that may result from it, especially if we see significant changes in cost. Strategically, we're going to look at financial impact assessment, meaning identifying the projects that will likely be impacted by these tariffs, conduct a thorough analysis of the expected impacts of tariffs on material costs, supply chain expenses, and overall project budgets, and then try to update those costs for projects. I did speak with Director Santos as he leads the effort in preparing the CIP. And, 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 you know, very, very accurately, he stated to me that we're really not going to know the impacts of this, perhaps for six to 12 months or until the actual bids are issued. So he recommends that with the projects that we will proceed with, that, that we go to bid, but we don't award until we know what those bids are. Many unknowns, unlike any other in my 36 years at Public Works and now here in the Town Manager's Office. The identification of critical replacement projects. Yeah, we're going to develop a criteria internally to determine which assets are at risk of imminent failure and require immediate replacement. So we got to go forward with those. Not every project falls into that category, though. Establish a review process to ensure only essential projects proceed, minimizing unnecessary expenditures. Work with operational teams to assess infrastructure reliability and prioritize urgent needs. Next strategic action. Stakeholder engagement and communications. Develop a comprehensive communication plan to inform key stakeholders about the decision if we pause the capital improvement plan while exempting critical replacement projects. Provide transparent and data-driven justification to maintain confidence among our stakeholders and engage with suppliers and contractors to renegotiate terms or delay commitments without incurring significant penalties. Another, another strategic action, looking at risk management and contingency planning. Another, looking at regulatory and policy advocacy, meaning engaging with people in the industry. We, I've already done this, specific to our sewer projects in having discussions with the Department of Environmental Protection as to how they are going to manage this, given the scale of infrastructure improvements, which certainly, as I serve on the, the Bridge Coalition, are discussing this relevant to the bridge projects. So this isn't unique to us, but this is, this is the marketplace that we function in. And basically, it's been turned upside down. Decision timelines and review processes. We will look at when's critical decisions need to be made and, and how review should be completed. In conclusion, by implementing this strategic review, the town can protect its financial position while maintaining the ability to adapt to changing economic conditions. The exemption for replacing failing assets ensures operational continuity, while a structured reassessment approach guarantees that investments align with long-term financial stability and strategic objectives. So what's next? We're going to, we're going to ask you to continue with the first read of our FY CIP as proposed. Between now and the 17th, when you actually begin to go into a second read and conduct a hearing, we will have determined if any of the projects should be paused based on what I've just stated. We would need to provide the town council with a summary of those results to review and any projects recommended for pause at that point, because at this point, before you read it in, if I had projects to recommend as Town Manager, I could actually withdraw them. We actually did that back pre-COVID, going into FY 21, if you remember, the CIP, because there were many unknowns then. We're not ready to do that. This has just occurred. I mean, we've heard about it. We didn't really know what would happen. This is happening now. So between now and the 17th, we'll take this under review. It may mean that I ask town council to consider action. That action may involve, that may involve proceeding with the second read of the project and, and the rationale, and holding the public hearing, just like we typically do. It may involve a second read with a modified estimated amount if for some reason we are confident that we know that that cost will change. Because what we don't like to do is come back to the council twice. And I'm putting you on notice that the market conditions have changed dramatically. And then finally, we may ask to withdraw the item. And in that case, this would likely result, not that it isn't an important project for the CIP, but that we would ask you to withdraw it, we would withdraw it, would sit back down and come back to you with when we would bring it back as a supplemental appropriation. And again, it should be noted that given the volatile nature of the marketplace, the estimates used for the projects in the FY 2026 CIP, though current, may be impacted by recent cost increases, thus requiring a supplemental appropriation prior to any bid award. I'll keep you advised as this progresses. And I'll stop there. This, I've given this still in point, I'll put it under Town Manager Communications for this evening. So you can have what I've just said if you want it. And I'll turn this over to Director Milne for his presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Well-thought-out response to changing conditions. Also, Glenn, could you make sure that that's forwarded to Cynthia? So that, I'd like to have that distributed to all the counselors so they have it.
Yeah, I just want, thank you. I just want to ask, is the CFAC going to be participating in this review? I would think their input would be valuable, or is it just going to be the staff?
Good evening again, Mark Els. We have the Chair of the CFAC and several of the members from the Infrastructure Committee. My suggestion, given the, given, given the short timeframe between now and your next meeting, is that we prepare this in the summary that we would share with the council, we can share with CFAC. I won't answer for them as to whether that's something they could take under review and comment on. I think that as they present tonight, I don't want to preempt what they're going to say, but they are supportive of the CIP as proposed. And I'll leave it at that. But certainly, yes, whenever we can have that sort of an input. We are on a timeline, and I'll let Mark Milne address that, by, under our charter. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Mr. Milne, welcome.
Thank you, President Tamish, Madam Vice President, Counselors. Good to see you all in real life and not in Zoom land.
You're much better looking in person, by the way.
Thank you. Yes, first of all, initially tonight, I, I'd like to send my thanks to Assistant Finance Director Gareth Markwell for, who took the leadership role in developing this document. Heavy lift, and I really appreciate all his efforts. I also wanted to thank our department heads and their cooperation in developing this plan, particularly our DPW and school administration, which is a majority of our capital plan every year. Without their cooperation, we wouldn't be able to bring forward the comprehensive plan that we do. I also would like to recognize tonight, joining me are three members of our Comprehensive Financial Advisory Committee here this evening. It's Chair Hector Gunther, as well as Jim Sprall and Jeremy Shea. I especially like to thank Jim Sprall, Jeremy Shea, and Chuck McKenzie for their review and development of the report on the CIP document. They're, they were the subcommittee of CFAC who, who produced that report that's been shared with you, and I wanted to thank them this evening. Some, beginning with the presentation, these are the topics that we plan to cover tonight. You've seen a lot of this before, but it's an important refresher, I believe, because we're talking about spending over $100 million. So I just want to, you've seen a lot of this before, more for the benefit of the public, I think. I'd like to refresh everybody with this information. So we'll cover why capital planning is important, what our capital planning policies are, our capital program funding sources, the contents of the document, and CFAC's report on the review of the plan. So, beginning with the purpose of a capital budget and a capital plan, these plans help establish the town's priorities and assist with the alignment to other plans, like our local comprehensive plan, for example. These decisions do not repeat every single year. So the consequences of an error can be much higher, and the large fluctuations obscure operating budgets, which is why you don't include them in an operating budget. These are large expenditures, and as such, they require a little bit more scrutiny, or a lot more scrutiny. What's the impact on the future growth of our community? What's the impact on future operating budgets or service levels? And many of these items are financed with debt issuances or loans. And what these do is they lock up future operating budget dollars, decreasing our budget flexibility, and binding future governing boards to make sure that you appropriate the debt loan payments that we have to make in, in the outer years, some as many as 30 years. Next, our capital planning policies are contained in chapters, or section 6-5 of our charter, which requires an annual five-year plan. This must be submitted at least 30 days prior to the operating budget. And as Town Manager Els alluded to, this must be acted upon before the first day of the last month of the current fiscal year. So May 31st is the last day we have available to act on this plan. Section 403-37 of the Town Manager's Regulation require that a task force be created to evaluate these projects. And any project less than $50,000 will be considered as part of the operating budget, and those projects equal to or greater than $250,000 can be financed with a loan. Many of them, we do finance with cash, but you can finance it with a loan. Here's the type of funding sources that we look for, for, for funding our capital program. We have targeted grants, and I'll talk a little bit about each one of these. We have cash reserves. We've established many different cash reserves, including several stabilization funds. We fund a lot of these with general obligation bonds. We also fund a lot with loans through the state revolving loan fund. We have the community preservation program. We have the Mass School Building Authority, which we just recently submitted two applications to. And we have a Chapter 90 program, which is dedicated for public roads and bridges. Targeted grants include federal and state grant programs. These are competitive by nature, most of them. We look for these on a continuous basis. Every department is out there looking for opportunities to help finance our program. Some of the Some of the recent examples are the Office of Coastal Zone Management for our coastal resiliency projects, for example, Sandy Neck. We're looking for hopefully more money from this program for Sandy Neck. Executive Office of Economic Development for dredging and great streets downtown Hyannis. The Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities for Housing Works Infrastructure Program. And the Mass Seaport Economic Council for our Bismarck Park Bulkhead, just to name a few. The Airport Improvement Program is the only entitlement program that we currently receive. And they get just under $1 million a year to help with their infrastructure from the Federal Aviation Administration. We also receive subsidies from now from the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund and as well as the Mass Clean Water Trust, which are similar to grants. Our cash reserves, we've created several of these. We have our General Fund Cash Reserves, as well as our Enterprise Fund Undesignated Retained Earnings. We use these from time to time to fund a portion of our capital program. We've also created the Sewer Construction and Private Way Improvement Fund, which 100% of our local meals tax goes into, as well as a third of our local rooms tax on traditional lodging. We've created a Comprehensive Water Management Stabilization Fund, which is credited with 100% of our local rooms tax on vacation rentals. We've created a Water Supply Stabilization Fund, which is credited with the payments that we receive under the Vineyard Wind Host Community Agreement. And of course, we have our longest-standing stabilization fund, our Capital Trust Fund, which receives resources dedicated every year from the General Fund to help offset the costs of the capital program. General Obligation Bonds. What these are, these are loans that we take to fund major capital expenses. We can either competitively bid these or negotiate them. We use the competitive bid system, and we generally issue these once a year. We pool of all our projects, go out once a year, because there's a lot of issuance costs associated with this and a lot of time involved in organizing this. Financial advisors are involved, bond councils involved, and underwriters are involved. And so it's a heavy lift, and so we usually pool everything and issue once a year as opposed to continuously throughout the year. These interest rates are influenced by market conditions at the time of issuance. Here we go. We're starting to see it. What's going to happen with the market next? And what's interesting now is that they're talking about examining the tax-free eligibility for municipal borrowings going into the future. This was looked at once before, about four or five years ago, and that discussion is coming up in Washington again. Municipal bonds receive tax advantages for investors. They don't have to pay state or federal income taxes on the interest that they earn on those bonds. But the federal government is looking at that again and determining whether or not they will remove that advantage, which will drive up our borrowing costs by anywhere from 150 to 200 basis points, or 1.5% to 2% is the estimate. So we'll keep a close eye on that. If you recall, some of you were on the council, I think, a few years ago, where we brought forward a letter asking you to support a letter to send to our legislative delegation to kill that idea, and successfully, with the outpour that they got from many local communities, that idea was killed several years ago. But it's back again. So we're probably coming to you for another letter of support. These bonds are supported or secured by the full faith and pledge of the town's resources, particularly our property taxes. And Mass General law, Chapters 70 and 8, Chapters 7 and 8 under Chapter 44, identify the purposes for which we can issue these for. And the amortization periods range from five to 20 years. Most recent changes increased that to 30 years. And the annual loan payments are included in our future operating budgets. The State Revolving Fund. Again, this is another mechanism that we use to finance large capital projects as opposed to general obligation bonds, more favorable borrowing rates. This fund is managed by the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust. Federal and state funds provide capitalization funding for the trust. The Department of Environmental Protection manages project development and oversight through projects that are funded through this program, but the trust manages the flow of the funds to the communities. The project must be listed on the Department of Environmental Protection's Intended Use Plan to be financed through the trust and eligible for principal subsidies. And they provide 0% interim loans on project costs until the permanent financing is conducted by the trust. And upon permanent financing, we currently qualify for 1.5% as a housing choice community, but if we adopt a neutral flow, we could bring that down to 0%. There is a limit of $50 million a year, as we've been talking about in recent weeks, in financing per year per community for clean water projects and 15 million per year for drinking water projects. Next category is Community Preservation Fund. This is funded with a 3% surtax on real estate property tax bills. The surtax goes into a special revenue fund, and those are restricted for open space, recreation, historic preservation, and community housing projects. We can issue general obligation bonds for those types of projects and use the surtax to pay those loans back. We estimate the revenue for this program to be $4.5 million in fiscal year 26, and the state has a trust fund, and they have provided some matching funds for this consistently over the years, but matching funds are declining as well, as more and more communities are participating in that program. And then the Mass School Building Authority. They receive their funding source from a dedicated revenue stream from the portion of the state's 6.25% sales tax. It's about a penny. This is not an entitlement program. It's a competitive process. They have a core program, which funds major renovations and new construction, and they have an accelerated repair program, which they recently reenacted. They put a stall on it or a freeze on it for a few years, and this is for roofs, windows, and boilers. They just reopened it in 2024, and the Barnstable Public Schools have two projects that just submitted for 2025, which came before the council a couple of meetings ago for your approval of their statement of interest. Each district is assigned a reimbursement rate. The base rate's 31%, and that gets adjusted upwards for three factors: community income, community property wealth, and community poverty. We don't know what our rate is yet. They will let us know once they review our applications and if they approve that application. Chapter 90 program, again, dedicated funding source for capital improvements for our local public ways. The allocation is based on road mileage, population, and employment. Eligible projects include construction, equipment, consultant services, and other expenses. Examples of some of the large projects we recently funded include the Sea Street Hyannis Project, Barnstable Village Streetscape, and Marston Mills Village Center. As you can see, those are very expensive projects. We typically pool multiple years of this funding to do a project like that. Our FY25 apportionment's about 1.98 million. Our Fair Share Amendment apportionment is $445,000, about half of what it was the previous year. That comes from the millionaire's tax. They dedicate that funding for education and transportation programs, and we received an additional $445,000 for that this year. And these funds are not subject to town council appropriation, and we have a balance of about $5 million that's uncommitted currently, but it is actively being programmed by our Public Works Department. So it should be committed shortly. So next, we're going to cover the CIP document and what's included here. Part one of the project, or part one of the document provides you a listing of all projects that were submitted by all departments. They total $770 million for the next five years, $125 million for our enterprise funds projects, $312 million for our general fund projects, and $332 million for our Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan program. Part two of the document covers the review process that we use to build this plan. The first step is the departments prioritize all their respective projects by the importance to their program operations. The next step is to convene that task force meeting, which we've invited our members of our Community Comprehensive Financial Advisory Committee to for the past few years. And that meeting is held to review the submissions, with the focus mainly being on projects that are requesting funding for the immediate fiscal year. Because there are about 300 projects in there, we don't have time to look at all the projects. We focus on the ones coming forward for the immediate fiscal year and rank those. The task force members will then score those projects against 10 criteria that are outlined in Part Two of the document, and which are tied to strategic priorities, and again, focusing on those requests for the immediate fiscal year. And then those results are illustrated on the tables in Pages 13 and 15 of your document. Part three of the document includes a review of the status of our existing appropriations. We have many projects that we're currently working on. 164 active projects totaling $110 million for the general fund. Part of this process, we go through and review, okay, what's been completed? Is there a remaining balance? And can we reprogram that for the next fiscal year? And we've identified 20 projects that have been completed with $780,000 remaining in those appropriations, and we're reprogramming those and asking the council to reauthorize those for new projects in 2026. There are two projects we have identified that we've authorized borrowing authorizations on that we are going to bring forward and rescind. Those are two school projects, which will allow us to take that $4 million of borrowing authorization. They've repackaged some of their capital programs, and they're going to pull back on those two projects and put the money towards other programs. And so rescinding these borrowing authorizations will allow us to reprogram those to other borrowing authorizations. Our Airport Enterprise Fund has 19 active projects totaling $39 million in appropriations. Our Public Works Enterprise Funds have 83 active projects with appropriations totaling $356 million. Community Services have 10 totaling $10 million, and Marine and Environmental Affairs Enterprise Funds have six active projects totaling $7 million. The next section of your document, Part Four, provides you an illustrative five-year funding capacity. Example, there is a lot of different scenarios that we can run, and we review these with CFAC. We will continue to review these with CFAC, especially the one for the Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan. But our general fund capacity right now, based on current funding levels from the general fund, will approximately allow us to authorize an additional $15 million in new borrowing authorizations every year for the next five years, until we reach a capacity there, and then we'll have to find more resources. In addition, we'll be able to do about $79 million in cash appropriations per year out of that fund. The Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan illustration that you see in your document provides what would need to happen in order to fund all of those projects over the next five years. A lot of positive scenarios, which were just deflated with some recent news that we received. But a lot of good things would have to happen. Some of those good things, I think, will happen still, but many of them probably won't. But I've updated that funding model, about 95% complete, with updating it to include the FY30 projects, which were the new projects this year. And I will take that back to our Finance Committee, review that with them, and we will have them come back and report to you, like we did previously, on different scenarios that we're looking at, based on different assumptions. There's a lot of assumptions built into that model. And then with the Enterprise Funds, we're looking at required rate increases of anywhere to 5% to 8% per year to fully implement their capital program, which is over $100 million of projects over the next five years. This section also provides you a detailed analysis of our current debt position, including all of our outstanding obligations and any borrowing limitations that we have. Finally, Part Five of the CIP document provides you a list of all of the recommended projects coming that we're proposing for funding next fiscal year, project descriptions, justifications, dollar amounts are all in there, and the appropriations. We're looking at a total of 55 projects for almost $102 million. 17 school facility infrastructure projects, 14 general fund infrastructure projects, seven comprehensive wastewater management projects totaling $66 million out of the $102 million. But there's a total of 55 new projects being proposed. Also in that section, there's an additional table that provides you a list of the projects that we intend to bring forward to the Community Preservation Committee, asking them to consider funding most of the costs, if not all of the costs of these projects, and at least the costs that are eligible under Community Preservation Program. And this is the list of those projects that we plan to solicit funding from the Community Preservation Committee, with the exception of one. We do have a trust fund, the Kirkman Trust Fund, which we could access for the Mosswood Cemetery Colubarium Project. So at this point in time, Mr. President, I'd like to turn it over to the Chair of the Comprehensive Financial Advisory Committee, who would like to make some introductory comments, and then a couple of other members of CFAC would like to present their review of the report.
Very good. Mr. Gunther. Mr. Millen, I think we have one quick question, perhaps?
I just had one quick question, Mark. I was reading that New Bedford had some ESER funds pulled back, that they had projects underway for their schools that they couldn't quite get obligated, but that's like they're opening bids, and now they don't have the money. Did our schools get tangled up in any of this ESER pullback?
They did not. They obligated all their funds, and so, yeah, we won't have. And we've also obligated all of the ARPA funds that we received as well as of December 2024, so we don't anticipate anything to be pulled back.
Mr. Gunther.
Hello, town councilors. Hector Gunther, Chair of the CFAC Committee. It's only been, what, two months since I was last speaking before you, and I think we talked about the funding model that Mark and his team developed to game out scenarios for financing the Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan. And you may recall in there that I outlined four scenarios. Number three of the four was where we modeled a recession at the same time as the Park City Wind Project was canceled. Town Manager Els talked a lot about costs and how those are changing, but I would just submit that we also need to be alert to changes in revenue. Every economic forecaster out there is raising his or her recession probability projections. I think JP Morgan put a recession probability in the third quarter of this year at 50%. If a recession occurs, that means tax revenues go down. The Cape could possibly be hit, for example, by decreased Canadian renters during the summer, and that would hit lodging, meals, and short-term rental taxes, which, as you know, are directly, you've put in the bucket for financing the CWMP. And then on the other side, the Park City Wind Project, I sent you all an email that the PPA negotiation contracts have been delayed yet again, and the latest delivery date to DPU is the end of August. My personal view is that, like a lot of developers of offshore wind in the current climate, Avangrid and Ibradrola are stalling for time. My personal opinion is that every day, the probability of Avangrid throwing in the towel on the Park City Wind Project, that probability is going up. So something, again, to watch, but it bears directly on revenues for CWMP. So with those comments, I'd just like to introduce Jim Sproul and Jeremy Shea. I'd say that we have two generations of CFAC people here. We have Jim Sproul, who is back for his second tour with CFAC, is that right?
I'm gladly.
After serving in the early aughts, and he was beguiled into coming back. And then Jeremy Shea, as many of you know, is a teacher at the high school, a history teacher, and he represents the new generation, and we hope to find more like him. As Kristen said, we have two openings coming up, and there's currently an opening, so we have three slots to fill on CFAC. But Jim and Jeremy and Chuck McKenzie, who is traveling internationally and couldn't be here tonight, they did a marvelous job putting together the report on the capital plan and on the five-year capital improvement report. So without further ado, I'll just turn it over to Jim and Jeremy.
Thank you, Hector. Thank you, President Tamish and Vice President Clark, for inviting us here. It's always a pleasure. And thank you, Hector, for that introduction. More importantly, I'd like to thank you for your steady leadership and guidance throughout this year's capital improvement plan review process. It was a pleasure working for you under your direction and be able to affect the CIP program. I'd like to also take a moment to recognize our fellow subcommittee members, whose dedication and unique perspectives made this work both meaningfully and collaboratively. Chuck McKenzie is a longtime-serving member of CFAC and an articulate senior corporate financial planner. He brought a thorough analysis- He brought a thorough analysis and a clear voice in our discussions, and his experience and insight were invaluable throughout the whole process. Jeremy Shea is a history teacher, as Hector said, at Barnstable High School, and most recently was featured in the high school production of The Little Mermaid. So if he suddenly slips into character, I'd hope you would indulge him and enjoy his enthusiasm. And myself, I was appointed Chair this year of the CIP Subcommittee, and it's been a pleasure. I'm founder of a small technology company that focuses in on STEM education, science, technology, engineering, and math, in partnership with the Office of Naval Research. Together, we feel it's a privilege to bring our diverse perspectives and shared commitment to the work and continue, and to contribute in a meaningful way to the well-being and the future of our community. Before I begin, I'd like to share a little background on how this year's report has taken shape. You'll notice that our format has evolved, and thanks, thanks largely, excuse me, that stands largely to the leadership of Neil Kleinfeld. If you remember, the presentation he did last year was outstanding. He was a hard person to keep up with. His exceptional financial analysis and his rare talent for transforming complex information into clear visual presentations was second to none, and his influence is the reason why we're sharing this work to you tonight in a PowerPoint presentation. We find it a better way to communicate and have a conversation as opposed to just having formal information provided. Of course, we're building on a very strong foundation. Prior to Neil was our former Chair, Lilian Wu, who taught us the value of crafting detailed, well-structured financial reports in a formal document format, and that transition continues. This year, we aim at bringing the best of both approaches, a comprehensive written report for your review, and a visual presentation tonight to help guide our conversation. While the financial, let me just move this forward, I think. When, while the Comprehensive Financial Advisory Committee provides an independent review of the town manager's capital improvement plan, the cornerstone of our review process was shaped under the guidance of Lilian Wu, former CFAC Chair. Under her leadership, we learned how to gather information and offer guidance in a way that maintains our independence while also fostering a collaborative, partner-driven relationship with town leadership. You may not be aware that Lilian joined CFAC in 2017 and became the Chair in 2020. She's brought incredible leadership and steady guidance throughout some really big decisions. Lilian is an economist with a deep federal background. She's worked with top government leaders, written five books, and even is currently serving on the Hyannis Rotary. It's her commitment to community service that has inspired a lot of us to be on the With that, tonight's report will be focusing on three specific areas and offer you three ideas to mull over and to see if we, it's worthy of a future discussion. The focus areas will be general funds, which was, I won't take credit for it, that was Chuck's diligent work. Jeremy will speak to the school, and then I will speak to the CWMP. And before we get started on this whole slide presentation, I want to do acknowledge the town employees that had helped us support putting this report together. I just want to express our sincere appreciation to the many individuals in the departments who helped us develop this year's CIP. It's of, as President Tamish knows, it's yeoman's work in the, in the process, and under Town Manager L's, he provided us with a staff who gave willingly of their time, Director Santos, Department of Public Works, including Griffin Bodine and Mark Mariano, Jim Benoit from the IT Department, from Superintendent Ahern's organization, Doug Bollinger, Director of Facilities, Chris Dooley, Director of Finance for Boston Public Schools, and of course, our own cohort, Mark Millen and Gareth Markwell. All, all this professional work that they provided us, the responsiveness, we ask questions, excuse me, we get answers. This is truly a collaborative effort, and we're most appreciative. Yes.
Can I? I'm, I'm in, I'm on Zoom, this is Gordon Starr, and I can't see the slides.
Counselor Starr, this presentation has already been posted to the Town Council webpage. You might want to go to that to view them there.
Okay, thank you.
Well said. So general fund highlights, the general fund projects are essential, as we heard from Town Manager L's, in preserving and maintaining town assets for residents, businesses, and visitors. Currently, there are $37 million for FY26, 48 projects. The town roads remain the largest category of general fund expenditures. Another area of general fund information under the Marine Environmental Affairs was the rising sea level and coastal storms, which require investments in docks, marina, waterfront, infrastructure, dredging, and the like. Currently dredging is 40% of their capital budget. Bridges require rehabilitation and replacement. Oysterville Bridge is one that comes to mind. These are large-scale projects that have to be maintained, and our aging infrastructure also needs to be addressed. Oops, excuse me.
So when CFAC looked at the school submissions, and then we looked at town managers' recommendations, it was clear that schools were a pretty big category, so we wanted to focus on that with you tonight. And certainly, we as a committee recognize the true benefit of these projects, and I think they, as a committee, were like, well, maybe Jeremy should be the one talking about it. I have a fourth grader, a child who's at BUE, so Charlotte's there with some amazing teachers. I'm engaged to a high school English teacher, Caitlin Sweeney, and I are getting married this summer, and I also teach at the high school. So it's a family affair. So it's clear that the town manager and the task force really wanted to focus on schools and particularly maintenance of these buildings, these facilities. It's prudent, in the opinion of CFAC and certainly the CIP Subcommittee, that we focus on funding these projects now versus having the schools deteriorate further, which certainly is both bad for the health and safety of the students and certainly the perception of education in this town. Three schools are really the focuses of these projects, and those schools were BHS, BIS, and BUE. These are the three largest schools in town. They have, let's see, that's, so it's 84% of the funding and 64% of the students to attend these three schools. And really, we would like to applaud the Superintendent Ahern. Really, what they're focusing on are issues of safety, accessibility for our students. Certainly, air quality has been in front of view this year, and that is being addressed as well. And we know that these buildings serve as centers for our community. As one that's in the high school every day and as a child in the schools, we know that this is the place that our community comes together, and we find that it's incredibly important to maintain that. We know my students in my Global Issues class, we've been looking at the Global Happiness Index, we know that this concept of, of community is what puts countries like Finland at the top of the happiness level, that when we commit our resources to these facilities and encourage our community to gather in these important spaces, that it has a positive impact on our communities and ourselves as a whole. As noted, I was just in the play at The Little Mermaid on Saturday night. My daughter and I were both up on stage bowing. We had 1,000 people in that auditorium. The high school has been committed to bringing together the school community. We have a new block every day, or every two weeks called Stable Time. My fiance is the coordinator of that. And two months ago, we had the entire school, the, every student in the building was in that space, and there was a presentation of music by alumni, talking about what's the world after? How do we get these kids really to think about what's beyond? So we know the spaces are serving a really important purpose, and we believe that the spending on these places is in the best interest of the town, both philosophically but financially prudent. We also would like to mention, this is not in the CIP for this year, but there is this project, the school consolidation project, and we thought it would be prudent. Certainly, Counselor Ledkey was in our meetings, and she was incredibly helpful in kind of pointing us to where you might want some questions, some comments, and maybe some concerns. So the, the K through three school consolidation is in the distance, and as a Subcommittee, we were talking about some issues and, and maybe some considerations that you, as a council, would want to consider. And certainly, we'll be talking a little bit more about that in a bit.
CWMP. For FY26, it's a $66 million program, and for the outreach years, 26 to 30, we currently have submissions of 332 million. The goals remain solid and committed to nitrogen reduction, water quality protection, and sewer expansion. The funding sources that we saw earlier have been identified. SRF loans, grants, Water Protection Fund, taxes, user fees, those have all been used as tools for funding mechanisms. And the debt, the one area of concern, of course, is the debt service rising to over $10 million, $10.9 million by FY32, FY30. And it's, we're advocating for a continuous review and monitoring of these, of this debt increase. I do want to speak for a bit on the CWMP funding model that we made, that Hector made a presentation to you on. We find that that's an extremely powerful tool from a management perspective. And as we move forward, the continuous review and strong advocacy will be essential to keep CWMP on a sustainable path. One exceptional tool, as I mentioned, is the CWMP funding model, which will provide town leadership and the public with transparency to anticipate future financial conditions, test critical assumptions, and make informed decisions. This document is essential because it offers a clear, data-driven roadmap for evaluating Barnstable, whether Barnstable can maintain or sustain the financing of nearly a half a billion dollars of wastewater infrastructure. So I would encourage the continued application of the CWMP funding model. I know it's a high priority with Town Manager L's and Finance Director Millen, and certainly I know Hector Gunther, our CFAC Chair, is, is a proponent of that as well. So we'd like to ensure that that becomes something to think about as we move forward. So the key takeaways for this presentation and our report to you this evening is, is that we were able to demonstrate that prudent financial management and strategic planning is taking place. There's a 10-year history that we provided you in the document. That's a tool that we use to monitor expenditures over the course of time, and it's an area in which we want to get better at and have better gradation. So we're actually tracking not what's submitted, which is what we're currently doing, but what has actually been approved and expended. So that would be able to allow us to monitor our liabilities as we move forward, our unfunded liabilities, if you will. The general fund projects, as Town Manager L's pointed out, are critical to the town's infrastructure, and CIP, school CIP planning efforts need to be addressed immediately. We can't echo to you enough that conversations that we've had with the school, they, we believe that they need capabilities and resources that they don't currently have to be able to effectively address the square footage of the school systems. And then finally, CWMP is central to the environment and public priorities. School and repairs, Jeremy had spoken to this a bit, but there's, there's $22 million in repair estimates and $46.3 million in new build, new build questions, which raises to us the cost effectiveness as to whether you repair or, or maintain facilities in an environment that would attract students or look at building new schools for the purpose of attracting students. There's a, there's a wide range of opinions. We tend to focus in on the maintenance and facilities aspect and making sure that that's properly taken care of, but that's going to be a good discussion to have between the school and the town. And then part of this discussion, which is also important with respects to the schools and their capital deeds, is their enrollment and retention. So there's a concern, as we've watched enrollment drop, what, what factors are involved? There are certainly educational factors, but there's also facilities play a part of that, and we'd like to know more about how the two could work together to increase enrollments to our school system. And then I believe, as Town Manager L's was speaking earlier, is that part of what we are obligated to assist and provide guidance on is the community readiness and the financial strain that's happening with all the pressures put on with respects to capital budgets versus operating budgets, where the money goes, what gets taken care of. It's a big responsibility. I have great faith that our leadership knows the right decisions to make, but it will be something that we'll need to track in the future. And then the last idea that we wanted to share with you is the concept of taking advantage of our expertise in the DPW and their strong engineering and engineering management on projects, large-scale projects, taking a look at can we, can there be resources applied to the school's organization where they're, they currently have a director of facilities? Is there a way in a matrix format where we can share resources, where they can learn from Director Santos's organization, how they attack projects? We have 16 projects for the school year and one director of facilities and an assistant director, but that doesn't, it's, it's a tall task to be able to keep projects on budget and schedule. And I look to the experience that we have with our facilities within DPW. Is there an opportunity for, to share resources, to learn, lessons learned, look at what the resource levels really are with respects to what the schools need in order to be able to maintain their infrastructure? And since we've all, since I've been here, when we listen to superintendents, their responsibility is for education, it's not for building maintenance, right? That's their number one priority. And if there's something we can do to help them along that path, I think we should think about that and have discussions on those topics. And then, so I think that ultimately what we're asking is for an open dialogue between town leadership, town councils, school, and to see if they have all the right resources they need to be able to effectively manage their schools in a way that which will we properly educate the students and retain and bring in new students. So with that, we are hopefully done for the evening and can take on any questions.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your work. You know, having been the liaison to CFAC for a while, I know how much work you, time and effort that you do put into it, not to diminish any other committee, but CFAC has to be one of the hardest working committees we have.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Ledkey.
Yeah, a couple of questions. First, the last thing that was just discussed about the DPW expertise with school, I would love to see that explored more, to see if there could be some sharing. I mean, I was heartened to hear Mark Millen's, I gave the example, New Bedford had some of their Esser funds, which were related to the ARPA. of their S R funds, which were related to the ARPA funds pulled. We didn't, fortunately, wouldn't have that, but it'd be nice to have a flow of information to see, to make sure we have the best possible management of our facilities at our schools with the numbers that you're talking about. So I would encourage that. Hopefully, Director Santos would, would be willing to engage in that conversation. And the other thing is having to do, well, now I've lost my, my thought on the other thing. I'll have to come back to it. Let me.
All right. Anyone else on my right? On the left, Councilor Levesque.
Thank you. So I am Councilor Levesque, but also known as Cameron's dad. So, and I say that because my son Cameron is intern in the finance department and has been for the entire school year this year. And he helped put together that C I P book, and he also told me, I asked him what he's been doing on the C F A C, I'm sorry, in the, in regards to the internship, and he says, "I, I just finished finding out if there are any anticipated costs on projects from the town manager." So it's a great education. Thank you, Mark, for taking him on. Thank you, Gareth, for taking him on. And it's been a great opportunity for him to see that as he is going to major in finance at the business school at the University of Maryland in the fall. So that's a proud Papa moment. But also, to Mr. Shea, your fiance is his favorite teacher of all time. So there's a lot of connection here. And I'm also a theater guy. I don't know if you know that as well. And I'm actually singing part of This World in a production as a Twisted Broadway men singing women's songs at Katuun Sound of the Arts coming up. So anyway, I'm wasting time. There's probably councilors shaking their head right now. But since you shared, I thought I would too. So make it fun. But that, all being said, to the business part of things, I think, and I was a big proponent of this, well, I was, since I've been on the council, but also as I was president, is the consolidation, honestly, of the structures and grounds coming under D P W and not being part of the school department. And that has, has ebb and flow of that, but that has been an ongoing discussion, I think, and I hope, hope it's still happening, so that, and it may cost more money initially, but at the same time, oh, Mark's coming up, he might give me an update. But at the same time, I think a better job might be able to be had, not, and that's not to put anybody down, but because of the expertise we have at our D P W, it may be that. Mark, did you want to respond to that? Is that why?
Mr. Els.
Is that why you walked up? I didn't want to waste your steps.
Good evening, Mark. I didn't want to cut off your.
That's fine. I'll, I'll keep going after.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to this. Thank you, C F A C, and you've done another incredible job, as always. Yes, this has been a constant dialogue, actually, since the days when we were tasked with looking at consolidation of finance and H R. Actually, back then, we looked at consolidation, specifically of grounds operations and buildings maintenance. The challenge that we had then still remains, and it is that the schools are under-resourced to maintain what they're tasked with. So we need to add the resource and then add it to the appropriate place. I would agree that our Department of Public Works does an outstanding job with the resources they're given. We can get into the details of how to proceed on this, but I'll jump ahead to this morning when I met with Superintendent Ahern, which I do regularly, at least every two weeks, if not more frequent. And one of the items we discussed was this exact issue. D P W is going to be looking at segments of the capital improvement projects that they have, and Director Santos and I are frequently discussing it. You know, certainly, things like paving and sidewalks and curbing are one that, that is, is absolutely our expertise. Certainly, buildings and roof, roofs on buildings are a big capital request. That's another area. But we immediately move into the discussion of need for additional resources. And that's true of public works as well. They do a good job, but they do a good job because our council has given them the resources to be able to perform to that level. If we begin to dilute that, then they won't be able to perform to that level. And so, I, I mean, we need to get into, and President, I'm sorry, President of Town Council has discussed with me, once we get through this year's capital and operating budgets, to begin conducting some workshops on budget, certainly, and looking at things like revenue generation, and what are our policies relevant to that, and where will we go? Because of all of this, we'll require more resources. So I think it's real important that we get into those discussions, and certainly, our school department is one of the primary locations that, or primary programs and services, including their facilities, that will need those additional resources. So the, the discussion continues, but the challenge really remains the same as, and it is, we need to put more resources into these areas, so where's that money going to come from? And we need a policy, or, or we need to look at existing policies, and then to discuss moving forward with, do we, you know, I won't go, I won't go too far there. We need to have this discussion. And I know we're talking about doing that after budget season. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you. And to the point where, and I thank you for bringing that up, because that was my next point, is that we do need more growth dollars. These expenses, you know, inflation, different things, these aren't coming up, the, I mean, these aren't going down. Now they're going to go up. There's already lumber companies are already starting to try to charge 25% more, just based on the fact that the tariffs are coming. So they're getting head start, so to speak. So, and I'm, and I'm talking to builders, I'm talking to people who are very concerned. And on top of that, I, I think it's, it's important to say that there was a policy in place in regards to what we were doing as a council, and that was, we need growth dollars. And we put policies in place that would increase tax revenue, including our Form-Based Code. And when we talked to people, and we talked to the public, and when we talked to councilors, we came to a decision for all councilors that could vote, and I know other people that, and I've said this, and I will beat this drum all day long, that we became to a decision, ten to nothing, ten to zero, for the councilors that could vote on it, that we would move forward and give this an opportunity to redevelop blighted, unutilized, undeveloped properties. Not to change Main Street and make it four stories all the way down, but to take property and do that so that we could indeed increase the growth dollars and increase business opportunity for local businesses on our Main Street with the looming development of W S on, in the, in the landing. And so, you know, they already, they're moving. We got, you know, those, that place is getting filled, that's doing those things. Meanwhile, back at the ranch here on Main Street, we have a concerted effort by rumor and different things, that the zoning's changing, so to shut down this project, and it's rumors being spread around by Hyannis Historic Committee and members of the Hyannis Historic Committee. And we're shooting down, and we're not negotiating in good faith with people who are buying property, thinking that they can build a certain type of project, and they can't because the Hyannis Historic Committee shoots it down, which stops redevelopment, which stops taxpayer dollars coming back into our general fund. And that is, that is something I think we need as a council to really think about. And this has only been happening since the class of 2023 came into play. So we need to think about this because this is a looming threat. We have expenses, and that's just one, that's just one example. I could give other examples. We could talk 35 Scudder all day long, too. And the fact that we would not have a conversation with people, we just shut down, no, we don't want it, we don't want it, we don't want it. And now we have a, a school, a very good school, a part, a school that's willing to partner with us, that took forty acres off the tax roll initially, now they just bought a conference center. We're going to lose the income tax, I'm, I'm sorry, the property tax in regards to that, rooms tax, meals tax. Not only does it affect the town of Barnstable, because the tax levy doesn't go down, tax levy just gets spread out further when stuff, stuff comes off the tax rolls. So that goes up, town of Barnstable, and more importantly, it's, it affects the, the Village of Hyannis and the Fire District and those taxpayer dollars as well, which we have no control over. But at the same time, those are still our residents and people we represent, and people we need to think about. So think about that, because this is what's happening in the town of Barnstable. People are afraid to build here. People are afraid to even approach our planning department and our building department because they think that, even though the zoning says you can do one thing, we have committees, appointed people who are overriding decisions made by elected officials. Thank you for your service. I appreciate you. I appreciate you. Thank you for coming back and, and making a great comeback. I really appreciate it. You're great people. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? Councilor Ledkey, did you remember?
Yes, I remembered what I forgot, which was the C W M P. It was some years ago that there was discussion, and there was an agreement as to a maximum, I think, price for a hookup to a sewer that was discussed. I think it may be time to look at that again. I'm not sure with, again, with what we, we were discussing now, and it's been quite a few years that we came up with that. To what level are we subsidizing? Are we fair sharing throughout the town of Barnstable? You know, some people will never be sewered, some people are having to upgrade their septics. I think it's an opportunity for a discussion on that. I really do, especially when we continually talk about override. So that was the other thing. I'd like to have the, maybe the C F A C maybe lead that and look at that, that it might be time to relook decisions that were made some years ago. And as to the Main Street Historic Waterfront Commission, they are a regulatory body, just as others are regulatory. I'm on the committee on committees. A regulatory body has to operate as a regulatory body, so it's within their purview to operate that way. So I, you know, I'm not the, I was the liaison to it, I'm not anymore. So I don't disparage their decisions. They have an incredibly difficult job, and I think they do it beautifully and well, and they go by the guidelines that they have.
Thank you. Further discussion? Is he done? Thank you. Thank you to your committee. Thank you to your subcommittee.
Thank you.
Well done. And will we have a singing report next year, Jeremy?
I'll be ready for it.
All right. Thank you. A sense of the council. We have, we're moving several items to further hearings and one grant acceptance. Do you want to forge forward, or do you want to take 10 minutes? Do we have a sense? 10 minutes. 10 minutes, we'll be back. Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Good to see you.
Thank you. And we have a singing report next year, Jeremy?
I'll be ready for it.
All right. Thank you. A sense of the council, we have, we're moving several items to further hearings and one grant acceptance. Do you want to forge forward, or do you want to take 10 minutes?
Ask.
Do we have a sense?
I'd like a break.
10 minutes. 10 minutes, we'll be back. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Good to see you.
Thank you. And will we have a motion, please, to refer items 2025-150, it's an item of new business that may be acted upon by majority vote, is an authorization to contract for and expend a fiscal year 2025 grant from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection in the amount of $37,615 for the purpose of funding nitrogen scenario modeling, as written.
Second.
Okay, thank you. I recognize Mr. Santos.
Good evening, councilors. Dan Santos, Director of Public Works. The Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection is providing a grant opportunity for municipalities with watersheds that have been designated as nitrogen sensitive. The purpose of this grant program is to assist these municipalities in activities that contribute to or come from a comprehensive wastewater management plan, which, as you know, we have a very substantive one. Town of Barnstable has been awarded a $37,615 grant to support nitrogen scenario modeling with the Massachusetts Estuary Project Models for Adaptive Management Scenarios in Lewis Bay, Centerville River, and the Three Bays Watersheds, that will evaluate options such as innovative and alternative septic systems, modifications to sewer areas, effluent disposal options, and timelines for completing this work. This project will be completed by June 30, 2025. This grant is a reimbursement grant in the amount of $37,615. The town must expend and request reimbursement of the costs. All costs associated with this grant must be expended prior to June 30, 2025. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you see any issues with spending $37,000 prior to June 30?
None at all.
I didn't think you would. Any other questions? Council Leuckey?
Thank you. Dan, is this going to inform the work of the CWMP committee that's currently meeting?
Yes.
I mean, are you going to look at all three of these? Are you targeting? Can you just give just a little bit more detail?
Well, we haven't finalized the modeling that will be done, so we have the contractor who's been doing the work, and we will present scenarios to him to model based on the input we get from the CWMP Adcock Committee. So we're just about ready to talk to them about this. And basically, it's if we want to do, say, alternative systems or enhanced nitrogen-reducing systems in one area, we model that and how much sewer-ing we can remove by how many homes we can add, and if that'll work. Sometimes it doesn't work, because you have to remove all the nitrogen, but in some watersheds, it may work. So if you, for example, put enhanced nitrogen-reducing systems on 50 homes, you could not sewer 20 homes. And where this makes more sense to us and from the start of our plan is in the western part of the town, where it costs a lot of money to get out there and have all these collection systems, and if you can reduce that, you're going to save a significant amount of money.
You know, we heard about this a little earlier when we're discussing the ADUs, but I think any kind of more modeling investigation into innovative and alternative systems is money well spent, really is.
Yes, and I'll add just a piece to that ADU conversation, because it came up, is that the Adcock Committee is looking closely at this as well, because if you, for example, if you put an enhanced nitrogen-removing system on a property, you can add a bedroom, say, for an ADU, and you'll still have less nitrogen being produced. So those are scenarios that are going to be looked at. That may be very helpful.
Thank you. Any further questions on my right? On my left? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Counselors? Leuckey?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. And also, if I could have a motion, please, to refer items 2025-148 and 2025-149 to second readings on 5/15/25?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded, Madam Clerk?
Counselors? Crowe?
Yes.
Leuckey?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Madam Clerk?
Counselors? Leuckey?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Eleven yes. Thank you.
We are adjourned. All right.